So I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to thank our media and broadcast partners for broadcasting our meeting and reporting on it. Before we get the meeting going, I would invite former councillor Ross Romano, our new Member of Provincial Parliament, give him the opportunity to ask if you say a few words. He had asked for that opportunity earlier today, and we're happy to give that to him. Welcome to council, Member of Provincial Parliament Romano. So councillor, before he starts, he promised me he'd be brief. And his whole time as a councillor, every time he promised that. He didn't live up to his promise. So we're gonna see if he lives up to it on his last time here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillor, and to the community. I appreciate that welcome. It means a lot to me. I had to resign my seat today as a result of my election as your new Member of Provincial Parliament. And I felt that it was inappropriate to do so in a letter, and I thought I wanted to do it in person. It is a little bit of a bittersweet moment for me here today. I look around the room, and this has been a position that I've enjoyed greatly and has provided me with incredible experience. And I've formed some incredible relationships and friendships here amongst you all, both within the council group and as well within within the staff here at City Hall and within the community. This has been incredible for me and a great deal of fun. And it means a lot to me, what you've all provided me in terms of advice, friendships, shoulders to lean on throughout the process. It's been so important to me, and so I wanted to thank you all personally for that. I also wanted to recognise my Ward 6 friend and counterpart, Mr. Kompadich. Joe, you were so important to me when I first got on council and really served as a mentor and to me. And you were available for a lot of phone conversations and a lot of help in serving my constituents, our constituents in Ward 6. And I know that the Ward 6 constituents are left in very able and great hands with you. And I wanted to thank you for your friendship and for all of the support you provided to me. In closing, as I see Mr. Mayor staring at me wondering when I'm going to wrap up, I wanted to thank you all one last time for your friendship and for everything that you've done to assist me throughout this endeavour. While it is a little bittersweet, and while I'm sad to be leaving you today and formally resigning as the Ward 6 city councillor, I am so encouraged by the opportunity moving forward and by the bonds and the relationships we've developed together. I think we can work together to make Sault Ste. Marie a better place to live, work and play, and I look forward to that opportunity to doing that together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Romano. I certainly appreciate your comments, and on behalf of City Council, I want to make clear that we look forward to working with you in your role and certainly hope to find much success together on a going-forward basis.
Thank you.
Thank you. So councillor, since we're on this note, I think we should welcome back councillor Kompadich, who took a leave of absence from us. Joe, you've always been a strong representative of our community, and I thought your campaign showed that, and I thought you showed a lot of strength and a lot of grit, and they showed Ward 6 and the rest of the community what a great leader you are. So I want to welcome you back to council and let you know we obviously continue to look forward to working with you as we move the city forward. Councillor Butland had asked me if he could say a few words in that respect.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Kompadich, the mayor and I had a few moments a while last meeting, and we were saying, it wasn't last meeting, it wasn't that long ago, but when you put your name forward and you're not successful, it's very difficult. And I know from personal experience, having lost by 13,000 votes, trying to get re-elected, and I asked for a recount, but they said no. And they said, you know, don't take it personally, Steve, and it's very hard. You put your name forward, and I will say one thing about you, Joe, that nary a negative word was ever said about you anywhere and anytime by anybody. So when you're a politician and you have a reputation like that, it's to be recognised, acknowledge that, and I know you certainly mean well for Sault Ste. Marie and Algoma Steel as well. So, welcome back. Thank you.
So before we get this meeting underway, I have to read my historical fact for tonight. Thank you, councillor Myers. The first pedestrian ferry service between the US and Canada began in 1973, that's 1873, allowing for safe and easy travel across the St. Mary's River. The licence to operate the ferry was issued by the Dominion of Canada government to Mr. Joachim Biron. It was 14 years later, in 1887, that the railway connection, including the railway bridge, the US became operational. And finally, on October 31st, 1962, the international bridge was opened connecting Canada and the US for movement of people and movement of goods. Please visit the Sault Ste. Marie museum to learn more about our local history. Mr. Clerk, if we could start the meeting, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under agenda item 1, adoption of minutes, I have motion by councillors Fatta and Myers, result that the minutes of the regular council meeting of 2017-0529 be approved.
All in favour. Carried.
Under agenda item 3, declarations of pecuniary interest. Aren't there any declarations to be made?
Seeing none.
Under item 4, approve agendas presented. Just a note to council, there is an addendum. It's live on your iPads. I do have some additional material that I have emailed to you, but I've got it in printed form as well, and I'll be coming around during the delegations just to pass that out to you. Motion by councillors Fatta and Hollinsworth, result that the agenda and addendum for the 2017-0612 city council meeting as presented be approved.
All in favour. Carried.
Council, we have a number of proclamations and delegations tonight. Our first on 5.1, Queen Street Cruise Committee, Joseph Bichelia and Gary Trumbinski, committee chairs, are in attendance.
Welcome to council, Mr. Bichelia and Mr. Trumbinski. You're not wearing your leather jackets this time.
No, I'm in brown with superior media.
It's too hot. It's too warm.
Seeing none of the above, two Arcanidian portraits.
We're waiting for a video.
A video.
My apologies.
I'm here tonight with my co-chair, Mr. Trumbinski, to sort of give you a quick update and tell the city of Sault Ste. Marie that we are in our second event in terms of the cruises. And I'd like to, first of all, thank council and city staff for the assistance, again, that they've given to us to put this matter on. This year, we worked very hard, and as opposed to last year, we're making the downtown city Queen Street area as basically a pedestrian mall on the Saturday. So we're not at the SR Centre, we're downtown, and hopefully people will come down, participate in the festivities. We've worked very hard to make this a bigger event than it was last year, and we hope the turnout is there and we have good weather. Gary's gonna tell you what we're gonna do different this year from last year.
Great.
Thanks, Joe, and thanks to member of council, Mr. Mayor, member of council, we're very proud to be back here. Both Joe and I have worked tremendous hours to try and pull this together. And our committee, I want to thank Susan Myers and Rick Nero for working with us and being right there with us side by side. I also want to acknowledge Lou Turco for his expertise in advertising and helping us get this to where it is. This is, we're trying to build this as a large festival, and it is gonna be there. It's coming. If you saw the smiles last year, I know I saw some of you down there, if you saw the smiles on people's faces, it was tremendous, and that's what we want to bring back, is those old memories. And there's a lot of participation, everybody's proud of the automotive heritage. So it all kicks off this Friday. Registration will open at the SR Centre between 4 and 6 in the parking lot. Entertainment starts on the SR outside stage at 6 with Five Below Zero. That will be also the kickoff signal for the kickoff of the cruise. And Friday night, we'll have a good time and watch the cars. We invite the general public to line the street with their chairs, come down to the SR. There's George Pinder and Patches will be playing at the March Street stage. The Reggie Show and Shine Motorcycle Show will be at 7:30 Friday night. So there's a lot to do up and down Queen Street. And thanks to you, the council passing the bylaws to allow outdoor patios, we'll have a few of those going. So I think the community should come out just to see that. I think, you know, and you allow them to put those patios out, no charge, for the first year, and we thank you for that. That's helped our crews, that's helped our thing. So Saturday, we get going again. We close Queen Street East and Algen, I believe, or is it Moose?
Dennis.
Dennis. We're going right to Dennis. We have tractors, we have cars, we have race cars, we have drag cars, we have stock cars, we have junior dragsters coming. We have everything, and we're very proud of it. We're very, very proud. You have no idea how hard it is to get these people to pull in and accept this, and I think it's gonna grow. Thank you very much. We appreciate everything you've done for us.
I overlooked one important item, and that is an indication of the broad-based support that we now have. You should go on our website and see all of the merchants who donated money, donated prizes, and gave whatever they could to make this thing work. And our efforts with councillors involved in the committee is to make this a Sault Ste. Marie event, not just a downtown event. So look forward to this thing growing even bigger next year.
Sure. So we'd like to thank you two for your significant work on this, and obviously the councillors who have supported you. It was a great event last year, and a number of people went from the community at large and city council, and obviously you've grown that, and it sounds like a really exciting event. So we'd certainly encourage the community to get out on Friday night and Saturday and support the event. So thank you very much for your work.
Say a prayer for us it doesn't rain.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Under agenda item 5.2, Canada 150 update, Susan Myers, Chair Mayor's Committee, Canada 150 is in attendance.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of you, council members and some of the public, would have seen a bit of this presentation last Tuesday when we had our international joint city council, city commission meeting with Sault Michigan. However, even since then, there's been a number of things changed. So I'm gonna run through this fairly quickly. We've got a number of delegations here this evening, and it's all great, but this is the opportunity for the citizens of Sault Ste. Marie to now finally hear what's gonna be going on in the next couple of weeks. And certainly with Queen Street Cruise, as the fellow said, that kind of gives us a bit of an advance jump. I had a lot of fun and excitement over the next couple of weeks in Sault Ste. Marie as we cruise into Canada 150. So this picture that's up here, I mentioned it the other night, early on, the federal government was asking for groups across this country to take pictures with the Canadian flag. So we did this one earlier in the year. Unfortunately, not everybody could be there, but certainly a number of members of city council were there, and that was great. Early on in the year, we decided that we were gonna piggyback on Dr. Roberta Bondur's 25th anniversary of her space shuttle, which was great. So on January 9th, Mr. Mayor did declare Dr. Roberta Bondur days, because that is certainly one of Canada's historic events, and for us in Sault Ste. Marie, of course, we're extremely proud of Dr. Bondur's accomplishments. So the proclamation was read that evening. And then actually, as everyone knows, I mean, Sault Ste. Marie is very rich in Canadian history and in heritage, and we love to celebrate both. The Canada 150 community calendar is on our city website, and I just asked that you would encourage you to make note of this bookmark, and this is kept current, and this is where you will find out everything that's going on. And it's not just through these times that we're gonna tell you about in a minute kicking off June 21st, but right on through past Canada Day, into the summer, there's a lot happening. So just keep going back to this calendar, and you can check it out. One of the events that, and again, I acknowledged the other night, and I'll do it again, Lisa Bell in the mayor's office was part of our Canada 150 committee, and I'm telling you, Lisa's a closet marketer, I think. I don't really think she's in the closet about marketing, but she's a great marketer, and she comes out with all kinds of ideas, and this was one of them, was posting a leaf at community centres. And certainly Norm Farah and his group jumped on board, and Roxanne and her team at the library created these red leaves for us. So you can go into any of the community centres and say why you love Canada, post it on a leaf, and get it up on the wall. So that's been great. The mosaic, Canada 150 mosaic, some of you might recall, back in February, we had the National Mural Mosaic Team here in Sault Ste. Marie, and this is an initiative that's going on across the country. There's 150 community mural sections that represent the provinces, the territories, every part of this country. And Sault Ste. Marie, we were able to be part of this. They only accepted 150 communities in the country. So what we did was we had a mural design that we had to submit, and that was the design on the left that we submitted. And then on February 14 and 15, we had, we opened it up, people could register, we had over 300 people from the public come in over those two days. There's some real cast of characters at this table with Mr. Mayor and Chief Paul Saret from Garden River, and Senator Powley from Métis Nation, Ontario, Michael Birch, and yours truly. And we painted tiles on this four-inch by four-inch ceramic tile, and what we had when we were finished is two eight-foot by four-foot pieces that will form an eight-foot by eight-foot ceramic tile mural. And every tiny one of those tiles forms this overall image that was submitted with symbols of Sault Ste. Marie. And I have to keep drawing attention to the mayor's tile. He did an awesome job. That CP is for Christian Provinzano, and he did that freehand, and we're really proud of him. Dr. Bondur made her attempt, too. We shot, sent the tile down to her, the blank tile, and she painted it and sent it back up to us, and there will be no close-up of my tile. I assure you, it was a disaster. Obviously, my gift is in speaking, not in art. I hope my gift is in speaking, anyway. So tonight, in a few minutes, we're gonna hear a little bit more about why I love Canada from some of the youth of our community. But again, this was a great idea out of the mayor's office with Lisa leading the way on it. And this young gentleman here, Alexander Webb, was our first candidate, and he was here with us on May 29th, reading. And in a few more minutes, we're gonna have Maya Audberg here doing the same thing tonight. And also, we have others that are, their names have been drawn and their stories will be posted. I believe we have Olivia Cadham, whose story is on our city website under Canada 150. So that's another great initiative, and thank you, Lisa, for your support of Canada 150 that way. On the mayor's committee on Canada 150, and I should mention here, too, that councillor Hoopinon is my co-chair on this, and I have the advantage of being retired, and councillor Hoopinon's still working. So many times, I did just shoot her off emails and say, are you okay with this? Are you okay with that? So one of the things we're doing to really kick it off is a flag raising with the mayor on June 21st at 12:15. So if anybody can come on down to City Hall, 12:15 on June 21st, that is the official kickoff with Canada 150. There's a special flag that was produced by Canada 150 Secretariat, and we'll be flying that flag. And there's a, over basically from June 21 through till Canada Day, there's a number of different events going on, and all of these are on our website with posters and information. But June 21st is National Aboriginal Day, and that's a very exciting day for us. Both Chief Saret and Chief Sayers from Bajwana have been invited to join the mayor that day. I'm not sure if they're gonna make it, but they've got events going on on their own. National Aboriginal Day up at the Whitefish Island with Bajwana, and Garden River is also doing events, and they'll be sending us that information, so you can keep checking our website. And then we move right from there to June 24, and that's Saint Jean Baptiste Day. And that certainly is a time when we celebrate our French Canadian culture and heritage, lots of live music and children's entertainment, a lot of fun, and that'll be going on up at the canal, and there's posters in both languages. They have daytime and evening activities for that, again, on our website. The Canadian Multiculturalism Day, and that's June 27. I believe that's on our agenda for a little later tonight, too. Somewhere here, there she is. And you'll be telling us more about that in a few minutes. And that's on, as I said, June 27, Multiculturalism Day, and you'll hear more about it, as I said, in a little short time. And then also on June 27, the seniors are getting involved at the seniors' centre. They have Seniors Canada 150 Fashion Show, Pedacotes to Ponchos, and that's at the seniors' centre, and it's a $5 admittance there. So they're gonna have a fashion show with some displays and music, and that'll be a lot of fun. So Canada Day, Saturday, July 1. Dr. Bondur will be here, she's the honorary ambassador for Canada 150, and the mayor invited Dr. Bondur late last fall to join us on Canada Day, and they will be kicking off our celebrations. There's a full schedule for that day. We're excited that Saultite James Warner Smith will be returning home as our emcee. He does a great job. The Sault Ste. Marie Mural Mosaic will be unveiled that morning, and it'll be on, a replica of it will be on display at the Canada Day festivities. Lots of entertainment, again, checking our website. And the fireworks budget has doubled. Rick Borian, our city CSD department, has told me, thank you, thank you, thank you to the community, there's been strong sponsorship for this bang-up Canada 150 show. So there is a detailed schedule, it's on the desks of the members of council this evening, it's on our website, and it gives you the whole day's activities. We've got the Royal Canadian Legion involved with a pre-show. The opening ceremonies themselves start at 1 and go right through the day, culminating with dusk with a fantastic fireworks display that you've never seen before. It's, as I said, double our usual budget. So we told our friends from the other side of the border when they were here that finally we're gonna want upmanship them with their July 4th, we're gonna have a real bang-up July 1. So on July 1 as well, we've got the Parade of the Paddles of the St. Mary's River, and that's going up on up at the Sault Canal. They're gonna have 150 paddlers going through, and it's a record-breaking event. You can be in a paddle, canoe, you can be in a kayak, and you can go on and register for that. And that's a partnership with the Conservation Authority and Parks Canada, and there's a whole committee involved there. And that group's gonna wind up down at History Fest at the Old Stone House. So, a lot going on there. Just this past week, you might have noticed, our waterfront is now adorned with beautiful, beautiful Canada 150 banners. And on the area around Dr. Bondur's statue there by the Norgoma, there's one of them that has her 20th anniversary on it. And just again, kudos to our staff, they've done an awesome job. These are all along Foster Drive and the boardwalk area over to the art gallery. They look really great. So another part of Canada 150 is Ontario 150, and there's things that we're involved with. The Science North and the Roberta Bondur Foundation got funding from Ontario 150. And there's a Bondur Challenge being led by Dr. Bondur to snap a picture that's special to you. There's cameras on loan at the bush plane, and you can describe in a couple of sentences why that picture's your choice, and you can submit your entry, and the website is there for that. There's on tour, free concerts. We just got the word this week that Sault Ste. Marie is one of very few communities being selected for a concert being sponsored through Ontario 150. It's July 16 at Roberta Bondur Park. Bands are the Tea Party USS and the James Barker Band. And this is Ontario 150's initiative. And then Sesqui. Sesqui is also Sunday, July 16, right through to the 20th. And Sesqui is a cinematic dome tour that shows a screening of a 360-degree film called Horizon, shot all across Canada. It's got performers and soundtrack of original Canadian music, and you can just Google Sesqui, and you'll get all the details of information on that one. But it's free, it's from noon to 10 from July 16 right through to the 20th. So, Mr. Mayor, I have to take this moment and just thank our staff. I mean, we have an awesome, awesome staff team here who are all working flat to the boards in their usual functions, as well as on top of it, we've layered a lot of extra Canada 150 initiatives, as you can see. So everybody from Virginia MacLeod, our CSD manager, and her team, Canada, excuse me, Cathy Fisher-Stork sites, Margaret Hazelton, Terri Lue-Lagros, and our seniors, Rick Borian and Sean Fall, who's our summer student, they're looking after Canada Day. Norm Farah led the community centres project. Lisa, of course, I've mentioned, supports everything. Mark and Tessa in our corporate communications, the PWT, our science department, our parks department, there's great stuff coming with parks that you haven't even seen yet, that'll be, just knock your eyes out across the city. And then certainly at the library, our team with Roxanne and the staff. So we have a lot to celebrate as Saultites, a lot to celebrate as Canadians. We have our souvenir pins still available down in CSD, they're $3. And quite frankly, the cost on them is $2. We're making $1 per pin, and that difference has gone towards sponsoring the fireworks as well as the other sponsorship. So thank you to the community. I think we've sold about 3,000 pins, and, you know, we're just on our way, as you can see, a lot going on. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you to both you and councillor Hoopinon for your leadership and putting this together. You've done a tremendous amount of work, councillor Myers.
Thank you.
So thank you, and thanks to the city staff.
Under agenda item 5.3, Why Do You Love Canada Elementary School Contest, Maya Audberg is in attendance.
So if I can ask Maya to step to the microphone here. So this is one of the things we're doing for Why, for Canada 150, we're doing a Why I Love Canada contest, and we have a bunch of submissions from kids across the city, and I welcome more submissions. And the mayor's office goes down and picks a submission and gives the writer of that submission an opportunity to come here to council and present. So I got to meet Maya earlier in the mayor's office, she's wearing one of the Canada 150 pins, councillor Myers, I took it off my lapel, I didn't sell it to her, I just gave it to her. Yeah, so she's wearing my pin, I'll throw in her $3. And so, welcome to council, you had a great submission, and now we'll give you the opportunity to read it to not only your city council, but to your whole city at the same time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, my name is Maya Audberg. I'm 11 years old, and I am, it's a big honour to miss meet you and all of you, of course. It's also a big honour to be chosen to read my Why I Love Canada letter, and I'll be reading it right now.
Okay, that's great.
Canada, we are free in a beautiful, safe country. Fresh crystal water, clear water to drink, and mountains to climb and seek adventure. We are free from war and free to wander wherever. We have the freedom of speech, and we have universal healthcare. These are some of the reasons why I love Canada, but this is just the beginning. We recognise mental health, and we welcome our refugees and help them have a better home. We can marry anyone who we love regardless of gender. Maple syrup from maple trees that we tap, but winter isn't the only thing we have. We have winter, spring, fall and summer. Canada isn't just my home, it's everybody's home who lives in Canada. We have free rights to go to school and get an education, and we have gun laws to keep us safe. We can, we can play freely, snowboard, ski, swim and much more. There are so many things I love about Canada. My name is Maya Audberg, and these are some of my reasons why I love Canada.
You're welcome very much. And that was, well, we had that conversation earlier today, and, you know, if our youth is our future, and it is, our future is very bright, Maya, and you're certainly leading the way, so thank you.
Thank you.
We have another example of some great youth here, and, Mr. Clerk, if we can move on to the next item?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, our next two items have the same presenter. We have Create a Logo and Market Your Thoughts and Head Start in Business. The presenter for both of these is Ashley Gerard, Program Coordinator, Community Development Corporation.
Welcome to council, Ms. Gerard.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, citizens of Sault Ste. Marie. Really appreciate you taking time to listen to me go on for a few minutes here. I really also want to say thank you to all the teachers, principals, parents, students that are here today with us as well. It's a very important part of why I am able to do what I do here in Sault Ste. Marie. So I'm very lucky to be the program coordinator for Head Start in Business here in Sault Ste. Marie. Head Start in Business has been a driving Head Start in Business has been a driving force in entrepreneurship awareness and initiation for the past 15 years across Northern Ontario. In the last few years, it has taken off in Sault Ste. Marie. During the 2016-2017 school year, I have visited 20 schools from both school boards, delivering over 100 workshops from kindergarten to post-secondary, reaching over 2,000 students or potential entrepreneurs. Our program would not be possible, oh, there we go, without the support from Fednor, Ontario Trillium Foundation, NHFC, and our Northern Ontario Community Futures Development Corporations in the Sioux, we know it as the CDC. Head Start offers a number of programs across Northern Ontario. For kindergartens, for students from kindergarten to grade 12. So, today I would like to highlight the remarkable achievements of our students who have accomplished, what our students have accomplished through our Head Start in Business programming. This year, thanks to teachers and principals, 15 students from Cora Collegiate attended the, our event Enterprise Olympics in North Bay. Cora student Ryan Fleming and his team took home the grand prize. I would like to invite Ryan to come up and speak briefly about his experience and his
Welcome to council, Ryan.
Thank you. So, one of the reasons why I decided to go down to the Enterprise Olympics was mostly because of my teacher, Mr. Christian over here. He promised to give me a few bonus marks if I went down, and so that was no doubt in my mind. I also, I also wanted to go down there because, you know, I thought it would be a cool experience to work on a different project with, meet new people, and not be working with the same pals at school on different projects. So, when I went down, I chose the forestry and mining sector, and one of the big reasons I chose that was I was always into the outdoors, and that just seemed the sector that interested me. My team idea was an air filtration system underground for the miners. We wanted to run ducts underground to filtrate out all the bad air and bring in the good air so the miners could live a healthier life. The best part about the Olympics was definitely going down there and getting to hang out with my pals, but also I liked meeting new people and getting to talk to some of the business mentors down there as well, and bringing a lot more knowledge about running a business and business in general.
That's great. That's great. Well, congratulations, that's really impressive.
Thank you.
So, I kinda feel like I have to give Council Christian the opportunity to speak right now, though, so. You're just gonna have to stay there for a second. Council Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to publicly congratulate Ryan. He did a fantastic job, and it's no surprise that a young man like himself is one. He's an excellent student, he's diligent in what he does, and I also want to congratulate Ashley Gerard and her counterparts at Head Start in Business for staging the Enterprise Olympics. I think it's a great opportunity for students, it's a unique event, it's authentic learning. We call it authentic learning in the trade, and, you know, you can teach all you want in the classroom, but to be in an event like this where you're pitching your ideas to business people, it's invaluable. So, hopefully Ryan, along with everybody else that participated in it, gained some real-life experience. I always say that business studies is not a school course, it's more of a life skills course, life skills experience. And as we all know, Northern Ontario is gonna grow through entrepreneurship, and it's going to grow through our youth, as you had pointed out. So, events like this are great, and I hope we can continue to do them. Next year, it's in Sault Ste. Marie.
Nice. So, Ryan, let's be clear, Ryan's getting a few more marks then, Council?
Sadly, well, we'll see.
Thank you, Ryan.
So, throughout this school year, students from grade 3 to grade 8 also have been working on some business ideas, and I'm really excited to introduce you to them. Before I do that, none of this would be possible without the support from Sandra and Sumell, in addition to Village Electric, who have sponsored all of the prizes that the students have won this year. So, from over 400 local submissions, I'm very excited to present the six students who represented grade 3 to grade 8 in Sault Ste. Marie. They did an incredible job on their business plans and logos. So, first we have Thea from grade 3 at St. Anne.
I named my business Fishy Aquarium. My business is all about kids having fun with their families. We teach them about fish and other water creatures.
From grade 4, Sadie Lynn, and she's from FH Clerk.
Since I'm in the present class, I'm going to put it there, and I'm going to do it in the section, divide it by the 10% situation.
Thank you, Sadie. Next is Graylin, she's from St. Francis.
My idea is called Recycled Robots. It is a recycled robot factory where I will take recyclable items and make robots for everyone.
Thank you, Graylin. And from grade 6, we have Sophie. Sophie attends Our Lady of Earth.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for having me. My business is called World Walk. I would sell a virtual reality system that lets customers travel the world both in present and past time. Half the proceeds of this system would be used to improve the lives of people living in third world countries. Thank you.
And grade 7, we have a Cora intermediate student, Shail.
Hi, my name is Shail Giroux, and my company is The Kids Baking Company, a company in which kids learn to bake and sell their products. I thought I would combine my two favourite things, baking and animals. When you put two things together, or one thing together that you love, it's never work. So, I thought, put them together, and it'd be a lot of fun. Thank you to my teachers who have come to support me.
That's great.
And our grade 8 winner is from Holy Cross, Emma.
Hi, my name is Emma, and I designed E Point, which is a line of point shoes that have gel padding around the entire toe area to make point dancing more comfortable. These shoes will point you in the right direction.
All of our winners did such a fantastic job, and the reason that we came here today is I've asked Mr. Mayor to present our two regional winners. So, of all of these students, two of our students won across Northern Ontario. So, they don't know who they are yet, so this is very, no, they have no idea. So, this is very exciting. Our first winner, congratulations, Sophie, for World Walk. Our winners win a $100 gift certificate and a special prize from Head Start in Business. And finally, congratulations to Shail, you have also won the regional for grade 7. So, congratulations to all of our winners, you all did such a fantastic job, and I'm so excited to work with you again next year, and thank you all very, very much for your time.
Before you go, before you go, I just want to recognize each of you. The best part, I've only been the mayor for two and a half years, but the best part of being the mayor has been meeting with the future of our community, and I know that all of you who came early today got to come up to the mayor's office, and I firmly believe that any of you who want to be the mayor can certainly accomplish that. But I spent a lot of time in the community, in the classrooms, and talking in the grade 5 civics class, and talking to high school students, and we have a tremendous number of really bright and talented youth in our community, and I think you're doing a great job, and I encourage you to keep on doing what you're doing, and thank you for it.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under Agenda Item 5.6, Elder Abuse Awareness Day, June 15, 2017. Evelyn Terrio, member of the Seniors Rights Protection Councils, in attendance.
Welcome to council, Ms. Terrio. If you want to give people just 20 seconds to filter out, then we could.
I just want to join everyone in saying thank you. What a great, great, great privilege it is to have been here at this time to hear them. Good afternoon, Mayor Provinzano and council. On behalf of the Seniors Rights Protection Council, we come before you asking that you proclaim June 15th Elder Abuse Awareness Day. In 2012, the United Nations General Assembly designated June 15th as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, or WE Day, as an official United Nations International Day set aside to acknowledge the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue. Elder abuse is defined by the World Health Organisation as a single or repeated act or lack of appropriate action occurring within any relationship where there is an expectation of trust which causes harm or distress to an older person. It is a violation of the human rights. It is estimated that 10% of older adults will experience one or more forms of abuse at some point during their senior years. This represents up to 370,000 older adults in Canada, and of that total, 160,000 live here in Ontario. It is a one day in the year where the whole world voices its opposition to the abuse and suffering inflicted on some of our older generation. It also provides organizations an opportunity to promote resources and services available throughout their communities that may help increase senior safety and wellbeing. Through our outreach, we encourage communities and promote senior rights and ensure that seniors are treated with dignity and respect in order that they can age in place and continue to serve their communities as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and important and active members of society. The Seniors Rights Protection Council of Sault Ste. Marie and Area recognises the importance of taking action to create social change and help educate older adults to be aware of the different forms of abuse and neglect that may occur in their lives or within the environment, and be from Ontario, the oldest of world. Senior Citizens Drop-In Centre on Bay Street, where informative presentations will be provided by a variety of speakers to educate and help engage community members on how we can promote dignity and unite to stop abuse and restore respect. For more information, or if anyone would like to register to attend the seminar, please call 705-942-2195, extension 208. And on behalf of the Seniors Rights Protection Council, thank you for allowing time on your agenda to make our presentation, and thank you for proclaiming June 15th World Elder Abuse Awareness Day.
Thank you for your attendance, Ms. Terrio. Proclamation here. Whereas older Ontarians deserve to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and important and active members of our province. And whereas in 2006, the International Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse and support of the United Nations International Plan of Action proclaimed a day to recognise the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue, an annual World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Its recognition will promote a better understanding of abuse and neglect of older adults. Whereas Elder Abuse Ontario and the Senior Rights Protection Council Sault Ste. Marie and Area recognise the importance of taking action to create social change, to prevent and raise awareness, to educate older adults of abuse and neglect of older adults. Locally, thousands of seniors are at risk of being abused each year, whereas ageism is a major cause of elder abuse in Ontario. And whereas preventing abuse of older adults will help improve their quality of life and allow older adults to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life and vibrancy of Ontario. And whereas where there is respect, there can be no abuse. Therefore, residents of Sault Ste. Marie and Area urge to stop abuse and restore respect. And therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, Mayor of the City of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim June 15th, 2017, as World Elder Abuse Day in Sault Ste. Marie, and encourage all of our residents to recognise and celebrate seniors and their ongoing contributions to the success and vitality of Ontario and of Sault Ste. Marie. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Under Agenda Item 5.7, World Refugee Day, June 20th, 2017. Danny Kropodick, Coordinator, Sault Ste. Marie and Area Local Immigration Partnership, is in attendance.
Welcome to council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I thought we would do two proclamations at once since both pretty well speak for themselves. I would ask, though, if Alina could come up and just talk about, for one or two minutes, on the events planned for June 27, Multiculturalism Day.
Sure, absolutely. Welcome to council, Alina.
Ilta Kaikile. Good evening, everybody. I invite you, Mayor Christian Provinzano, councillors, family and friends, to join us as we celebrate Canada 150 on Multiculturalism Day, June 27, in Clerk Park, with opening ceremonies beginning at 10:00 a.m., running through until 3:00 p.m. The day's event will include vibrant, colourful, cultural dance performances, music, vendors, crafts, children's activities, giveaways, and prizes throughout the day. Admission is free, some costs will apply for food and vendors. I do also want to say here, even though it was mentioned earlier, that the seniors, seniors 55-plus, are invited to drop into the Seniors Drop-In Centre at 2:00 p.m. for a Canada 150 Fashion Show. Tickets are $5 and can be purchased at the Seniors Drop-In Centre. This is a day for our community to celebrate diversity and sharing of our cultures and heritage that we are passionate and proud of. Please feel free to wear your national dress, as I have, and I invite everyone to Multiculturalism Day, and let's reflect on Sault Ste. Marie's rich cultural mosaic, and we just hope for a nice, sunny day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, I have two proclamations here. Are you speaking again, Danny, or we're good?
No, we're good.
Okay. So, the first proclamation is on World Refugee Day. Whereas the United Nations High Commissioner for Refugees is mandated by the United Nations General Assembly to lead and coordinate international action to protect refugees and find solutions to refugee problems worldwide. And whereas it is important to recognise that Canada has a long history of helping and protecting refugees, and is signatory to the 1951 United Nations Convention relating to the status of refugees and its 1967 protocol. And whereas the United Nations General Assembly unanimously adopted on December 4, 2000, a resolution naming June 20 of every year as World Refugee Day to build awareness, empathy, support, and respect for refugees. And whereas World Refugee Day provides us with the opportunity to increase awareness and understanding of the intricate process of integration for refugee men, women, and children, and recognise their courage, strength, and determination in starting a new life in a foreign country with dignity. And whereas the City of Sault Ste. Marie and its people continue to welcome refugees and make resources available to them and their families so that they can have a dignified life in a safe and free environment. And therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, as Mayor of the City of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim June 20, 2017, as World Refugee Day in the City of Sault Ste. Marie. The second proclamation is for Multiculturalism Day. Whereas on November 13, 2002, the Government of Canada by Royal Proclamation designated June 27 of each year as Canadian Multiculturalism Day. Whereas Canadian Multiculturalism Day is an opportunity to celebrate our diversity and our commitment to democracy, equality, and mutual respect, and to appreciate the contributions of the various multicultural groups and communities to Canadian society. And whereas the concept of diversity encompasses acceptance and respect, and recognises that each individual is unique, this includes race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, socio-economic status, age, physical ability, religious belief, political belief, or other ideology. A community that values diversity moves beyond simple tolerance to embracing and celebrating the uniqueness of every individual. Now therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, as Mayor of the City of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim June 27, 2017, as Canadian Multiculturalism Day, and invite all members of the community to take part in Canadian Multiculturalism Day to acknowledge of the community to take part in Canadian Multiculturalism Day to acknowledge, celebrate, and embrace our diverse and cultural past, present, and future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Under Agenda Item 5.9, Recreation and Parks Month. Virginia MacLeod, Manager of Recreation and Cultures, in attendance.
There we go. That's better. Thank you. Mayor Provenzano, city council, and members of our community, June is Parks and Recreation Month. So there's no better way to celebrate Canada's 150th birthday by getting involved and active in your community, enjoying the health benefits that our beautiful parks and recreation services provide. Recreation and Parks Month builds strong and vibrant communities and celebrates the spectacular parks and open spaces of Ontario. Recreation and Parks also provide children with more opportunities for active play. It helps them discover their own strength and to connect with their peers. So we have a number of events that are going on for the community this month. #Activesu has three initiatives, and that initiative is supported by the Ontario Government through recreation, sport, and tourism. First, there's Bellevue Park Runs, which are taking place on Saturday mornings. They're free to the community, so anybody can come out and hit the trails for a five-kilometer run. As well, #Activesu is helping to get a women's ball hockey league underway. So if you click onto the #Activesu link, there'll be information about how to get involved if interested. And as well this summer, we're going to be doing Learn to Skateboard events down at the Skateboard Park at Queen Elizabeth site, so people can get out and come down and enjoy it. And all those activities are free to the community, and the ball hockey will eventually have a registration as they get moving forward.
That's a great Canada 150.
Thank you. We're very excited as well. We have the grand opening of the Quanis Club of Lake Shore Disc Golf Course this Saturday, June 17th, at 1:00 p.m. So everybody is welcome to come down. We hope to see you there. You can learn how to play disc golf. And that's located at Penhorwood Park, which is the corner of Pine Street and McDonald's. So hopefully, we'll see a number of the members of the community come out and have some fun this Saturday. As well, on June 21st, I will also be hosting Go Skate Day. That's the national day for the event. It's taking place from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the skate park. Again, this is partnered with #Activesu, the city of Sault Ste. Marie, the Superior Community Skate Park Association, and Healthy Kids. And it's just a time to get out, get active, listen to some great music, have some snacks, and enjoy the day. And taking off Canada Day festivities, July 1st, we start the Hub Trail Festival. This is the sixth year for the festival, and it takes place from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And there is numerous locations that you can pick up your passport and get out and enjoy the beautiful hub trail, and then take your bike, or roll, or walk down to the Canada Day activities. So just in closing, I'd hopefully, everybody will get out and enjoy the wonderful parks and services that we have, and yeah, get active, walk the trails, and participate in an activity or one of the numerous events that are taking place this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. So in Sault Ste. Marie, we are fortunate to have a variety of recreation and park systems providing countless recreational opportunities for residents and visitors from around the world. And whereas recreation enhances quality of life, balanced living, lifelong learning, helps people live happier and longer, develops skills and positive self-interest in children and youth, develops creativity, and builds healthy bodies and positive lifestyle. Whereas parks, open space, and trails provide active and passive outdoor recreation opportunities, help maintain clear air and water, and promote stewardship of the natural environment. And whereas the benefits provided by recreational programs, facilities, service parks, and open space reduce healthcare and social service costs, serve to boost the economy, economic renewal and sustainability, hence property value, attracting business, increase tourism, and curb employee absenteeism. Whereas all levels of government, the voluntary sector, and private enterprise throughout the province participate in the planning, development, and operation of recreation and parks programs, services, and facilities. Whereas Ontario is designated June as Recreation and Parks Month, and annually recognizes and celebrates the benefits derived year-round from quality public and private recreation parks, resources at the local, regional, and provincial level. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, as Mayor of the City of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Recreation and Parks Month. Thank you. Thank you, Virginia.
Under Agenda Item 5.10, 60th Reunion. Plummer Memorial Public Hospital School of Nursing. Karen Bishop, graduate, is in attendance to address council.
Welcome to council, Ms. Bishop.
Thank you very much. This is a friend of mine, a classmate of mine, from the 60th anniversary of 1957 graduation from the Plummer Hospital. And that is something that you are no longer going to see, because nursing celebrations have changed. And thank you, Mayor Provenzano, staff, and council, for having me. Thank you for inviting us to attend this afternoon. I think it's almost evening, isn't it? The purpose here is to celebrate nurses and their role in our community, documented historically and presently. I have to have a drink. I'm not drinking long, by the way. Which I do very well. Mr. Waymus Simpson, in 1867, a factor for the Hudson's Bay Company at Fort Creek, closed the doors and abandoned the building on the east side of the Fort Creek and the cemetery on the west at the corner of John and Albert, which is Ward 4. The significance of this event having anything to do with nursing as an industry, which nursing is, it's an industry, relates to the closing of the doors in 1867. A factor was similar to the captain of a ship legally able to marry and bury. Nurses were needed to help with this process. One day, June 12th, as a celebration of all the nurses living and working in the city of Sault Ste. Marie, Ontario, would be enjoyed every year, as things have changed. We are happy to be with our classes. And a classmate of mine over there, we've been together for 63 years. And Howard and I have been together for 58. So thank you very much.
Oh, okay, sorry. I was just thinking.
Are you not paying attention?
No, I wasn't. I didn't think you were finished.
Yes, I'm finished.
I didn't think you were finished. My brother's a nurse. He's an RN. And my sister-in-law is an RN.
Oh, really? Nice, yeah.
And let me say that RNs and RPMs are the unsung heroes of the healthcare system.
That's because we're so quiet.
Well, you're also super important.
Thank you.
Thank you. Whereas approximately 500 highly-trained compassionate nurses graduated from the Plummer Memorial Public Hospital School of Nursing between 1919 and 1971. Whereas the graduates worked tirelessly throughout our community at the Sioux area hospitals, group health center, Algoa Public Health, Community Care Access Center, Midwives of Algoa, and Arch in patient care and education. And whereas nurses play an important role in the lives of those in their care, in our community at large by nature of their keen judgment, compassion, and clinical expertise. And whereas nurses are an integral part of our healthcare system, serving residents of all ages with skill, knowledge, and commitment, caring for their patients 24 hours a day, 70 days a week. And whereas nurses advocate on behalf of their patients for an environment that promotes safe patient care, dignity, and respect. And whereas the PMPH graduating class of 1957 are a group of lifelong friends who recently gathered to celebrate the 60th anniversary of their graduation. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, Mayor of the City of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim June 12th, 2017, as a day to celebrate the graduates of the Plummer Memorial Public Hospital School of Nursing, and encourage everyone to recognize all nurses for their contribution to the wellbeing of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Myers has a further comment. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to acknowledge my wardmate, who is a nurse, an RN, BSCN nurse, and I just have a great admiration for all nurses. My mom was a PMPH 1939 grad, right, Ina and Karen? And I grew up knowing, as you said, Mr. Mayor, how important nurses are. So I take my hat off to our two guests this evening for sure, and also to my wardmate, Counselor Hollingsworth, for such a great career. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, council, just occurs to me, as I look through our delegations tonight and everything we've discussed today, that there are a lot of really great, positive things happening right now in the community, and really, a lot of young people doing great things, and longtime community volunteers and supporters doing some really great things. And I think, you know, tonight's indication and our delegations today really show that. So there's a lot to be positive about and look forward to. I think we're going to move on to 5.11. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have a presentation on the steel industry tonight. We are very fortunate to have Dr. Peter Warrion with us. Dr. Warrion is a distinguished research fellow, Monck School of Global Affairs at the University of Toronto. He is widely recognized as Canada's leading academic authority on the steel industry. In 2016, he published A Profile of the Global Steel Industry, second edition, and in 2017, he published, with Mike Smitka, A Profile of the Global Auto Industry. Both books are available from Amazon. He was formerly Research Director of the United Steelworkers of America and Chief Economist of the Province of Ontario.
Welcome to council, Mr. Warrion. That's quite a CV. Before you get going, I'd just like to recognize and thank Counselor Butland. This was an idea Counselor Butland had, and I thought a very good one, to give council the opportunity to hear from, frankly, an expert on the steel industry, and to give us a little presentation and maybe take an opportunity to answer some questions that we might have about that afterwards. So thank you, Counselor Butland, for your leadership, and Mr. Warrion, thank you for making the time to come to Sault Ste. Marie and talk to us. It's much appreciated.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. I'm quite aware that most sensible people will probably stick needles in their eyes rather than listen to an economist at the end of a busy day. So I'll try to make this engaging. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. I want to talk to you for a few minutes about the state of the steel industry, and I'll do that in two ways. I'll make some opening general remarks to try and give you some reference points for what's happening now and what happens next in steel. And secondly, I'll respond to seven questions that the mayor's office presented to me as generally informative questions. The slide. So by way of background, three reference points I'll give you in trying to understand what's going on in the steel industry. One is economic cycles in steel, cyclicality and volatility. Secondly, leadership in auto steel. That's about 90% of all the R&amp;D in the last 15 years has gone into auto steel. And people like to talk about cars, so I'll talk a bit about cars. But also, what happens there can also then migrate to residential, to pipelines, to energy, to other areas. And thirdly, talk about the new materials competition, and I'll try to argue that steel rises, not declines, compared to aluminum and other major references. So volatility. Steel has always been, and I won't take you down to the weeds on that, but any economist has to present you with a graph whether they understand it or not. Point is, steel's always been cyclical. But what we've witnessed in the last 15 years, a kind of volatility that we've never seen before. And at the central mountain there, you've got the rise of China. China did not revolutionize how you make steel, but they revolutionized the price of the inputs, iron ore, coal. And that's huge swings, has been fundamentally destabilizing. So for instance, without getting into the details, a lot of Algoa's current problems have to do is they signed long-term iron ore contracts at prices that were, over a period of two years, $300 to $400 million above the market price. You know some of that story with Cleveland clips. But this volatility, so cyclicality has been there. Volatility has now emerged in a way that's just fundamentally destabilizing. That's a background factor you need to understand. Secondly, automotive. This is automotive alley, and it begins with you at the Saginaw Auto Parts Plant that goes to Mexico City. This is the major concentration of the auto industry, the assembly plants and their supplier firms. The importance of that is, we all hear about innovation, and innovation in automotive is a unique, gone to a uniquely new space. The importance is actually this. The auto corridors, about 75% of the auto capacity is in that one corridor. And in Europe, the auto corridor that goes from the Midlands through to Baden-Württemberg in Germany is, again, about 75%. The importance of that is, that's where you want to be in automotive, but automotive steel. And because of that, that's why China is not a major threat. There is no such concentrated corridor in Chinese. Among the decisions you make when you're 22 years old that drive your parents crazy is, I did my outside minor for my PhD in Chinese history. I thought it'd be important sometime. Well, it is. So in China, you've got 60 auto producers. Canada has problems with 10 provinces, China has 31, and the auto industry is spread across them. So they don't have the critical mass. So we have lots of problems to deal with, but in this domain, we don't have to worry about China the way we have in other industries. So EVs, electric vehicles, we hear lots about that today, but we heard it before. 100 years ago, should the mayor have been the mayor of New York City at the time? That wouldn't be cool. It's the way to go. Anyway, the point is, New York City, 100 years ago, the most popular, the biggest segment of cars were electric vehicles. And on the left-hand side, you see a 1904 Buick, a different age, but just a beautiful machine. And then, of course, you see a Tesla on the right. The importance of that is, it was when you built out the highway, intercity highway system, the energy density of the batteries couldn't match the internal combustion engine. So the gasoline engine, if you like, won for that period of time, and it's still the problem. The energy density of the batteries today still doesn't match the energy density of the internal combustion engine. In fact, the rate of improvement of the internal combustion engine inefficiency is 1% to 2% above the electric engine for the last 10 years. So do I think in the future, vehicles will be electric? Yes. But it's 10 or 15 years off, because the energy density issue is still there. I also, as an aside, looking at the Tesla, which the rollout, first two Tesla has aluminum, the next one, the Tesla 3, is steel. One share for the home team. But it's also very, for folks like you, it's very important, because both the electric vehicle and the autonomous vehicle, both require major expansions and investments in public infrastructure for them to work, in other words, they're designed to work. And the problem is physics. If from 2020, every new vehicle was AV, for instance, it will be till 2038 before half the vehicles in North America will be AVs. And what political body is going to make a decision for a trillion-dollar infrastructure spend when only half the vehicles are able to use it between now and 2038? So important story, I think it's 10 to 15 years off. The bigger story is actually how you make these, regardless of powertrains, and whether or not the car of the future is an iPhone with wheels. How do you make them? So the real revolution taking place 100 years ago was in manufacturing. We've all seen those pictures, gray films of the Highland Park where Henry Ford created a revolution in manufacturing in 1913, 14, dropped the price of a Model T from $900 to $300. And there's a continuous assembly line. The problem is, what they don't tell you is, the holdup on the assembly line was the paint shop. Now, you've probably all heard the phrase that Henry Ford, the consumer can have any kind of color, as long as it's black. He actually never said it. It's somewhat, not exactly like Mr. Trump, but he actually never said that. never said that. He actually was responding to a question is, the pigment I paint for a harbor, the black dries quicker than anything else. So the cars would be black, because they had to take them off the assembly line, and they sat for 26 days till the paint dried. That was the holdup. Henry didn't have the continuous assembly line. And then one engineer, E.S. Bud, over on the right-hand side, for actually the Dodge Brothers in 1915, then Henry Stone, that's an all-steel auto body. Because they had figured out, if you made it out of steel, made it out of steel, then you could have it paint dried, you could heat the ovens, because we didn't have the wood in the body, and you could have a continuous assembly line. So it was in manufacturing and design. What I'm wanting to argue to, the period we're now into in automotive is like 1928, a brand-new. So what happened rolling forward is design and manufacturing came together. Al Capone liked cars. The one on the left-hand side, the ragtop we've seen in all those old films, and Al's guys could spray the sidewalk machines. But the reason for that is, they couldn't get a strip, a sheet of steel wide enough. Once they did that, in 1928, in Butler, Pennsylvania, now you could do the whole car. Anybody here got Czech, Czechoslovakian background in your family? It was a Czech auto company, auto industry, in 1920s and '30s, was like the Japanese in the 1970s and '80s, a focal point for design. And Hitler actually invaded to get his, to get his hands on the auto plant. So all I'm saying is, the materials revolution, which brought together the internal combustion engine and the all-steel auto body, that was the industry prototype for the whole industry for the next 60 years. And now we're changing. But that was it. It's a combination of manufacturing and design. And on the right, you've got the famous 1936 Tatra, independent suspension, power steering, air conditioning, everything in it. But it took that change in manufacturing to be able to do the new design. That's what they're on the edge of. So new materials composition. The so-called CAFE environmental standards set off, what's always called in the trade, lightweighting. That's the new imperative for steel and manufacture across the industry. And you see on the right-hand side, a computer simulation of the body of a car, and you need a different metal recipe in each of those colored areas. That's what, in doing that, the metal's composition and the design, that's where the competition hits the road. But as I said, what's happening there, and that's where 90% of the R&amp;D money has gone, that spreads into construction, energy, and other sectors. But that's the lead point. And now you actually have a car company designing auto parts. So the materials producer isn't just making, coming at steel. Because of the new steel's properties, they can move into the design. And here, the Arsenal of Metal is virtually all the components for a car. So question one. In the longer term, what is the outlook for steel generally? Well, the lightweighting factor has set off a new materials competition. This is a key factor. Lightweighting is related to strength. You measure strength, tensile strength, pull them apart, how strong is a steel? And it's measured by engineers in megapascal. The tipping point is 900, 900 MPa, megapascals. Just keep that. For reasons of physics, aluminum can't go above that. Okay? The new steels are all 1200 to 2500. So there's a point where aluminum actually drops out of competition as you move forward. So it's the new materials. They're lighter, they're stronger, but it's the microstructures, way down at the nano level, those little thingies, the combinations of the alloys, and their distribution affects the performance. And this is why it tests the boundaries of design and manufacturing. So the new materials, so-called ultra-high-strength steels and composites, those are new materials. But there's no new aluminum. There is no new manganese. So in reply to your first question, Mr. Mayor, it is the future favors steel. We all hear about aluminum versus steel, and it's a bit like Washington Olympics, Greek Roman wrestling. You can't always tell who's on top. But actually, the future of the next 20 years is going to be decided in favor of steel. There will be more steel used, not less. You can argue, but that's what the academic stuff says. So again, question two. What do you expect near-term outlook for steel prices? We've had a tremendous run-up. Steel went up between October of 16 and March of 17 by 40%. I think the market's gotten ahead of itself. There's nothing in the economy moving. That's good, because the cash flow, all these steel companies are operating on a short-term cash flow basis, they're all operating in the black, including Algoma. The problem is, it's not enough to sustain the long-range pensions, maintenance, and reinvestment that you need. It also, frankly, makes it difficult, part of why these restructuring deals have dragged out, we just, I think they're before the court today. Stelco has just come to a conclusion, and I hope in the next while Algoma gets there, is, when the company's making money on a cash flow basis, nobody's going to make a concession, right? Or invite somebody else to go first. I mean, it's going to take concessions on everybody's part of some measure. But so, good that the prices went up, but it's not at a sustainable level. I think the second half of the year, it starts to slip back. Let's go to zero, but it slips back. Secondly, while it's been good in the short term, it doesn't, for a long-term basis, it doesn't sustain the pension obligations, the maintenance in the plant, and the reinvestment you need going forward. So lower prices in the second half of the year, $800 a ton is, that's a benchmark price across the industry. It's not Algoma's price, but across the industry. That's the threshold of maintaining a sustainable, profitable level, where you can, on a long-term basis, take care of the pensions, the maintenance, and the reinvestment. So down in the second half of the year from where it was, but still not bad. And it should be said, in the three big steel markets of the world, Asia, Europe, and North America, North America's in the best shape. It is not, the economy is not all that we would like it to be, but we're in better shape steel-wise than the other two. Your third question, Mr. Mayor. How concerned should we be about American protectionism and the threats to renegotiate NAFTA? The good news, if you read the trade journals, is the NAFTA partners, the steel, three days ago, the Steel Producers Association of Canada, the United States, and Mexico came to agreement on what they would like to see in the NAFTA. And that was going to preserve a North American market and not have Canada under the so-called 232, the big U.S. steel trade investigation, that we won't be caught in that. So there appears at the industry level to be that level of agreement. No guarantee of what happens in Mr. Trump's Washington, but at that level, the problem seems to be sorted out. Where we will see activity for, if you have nothing to do other than look at trade law, is rules of national origin, a real valuation content. To be ruled North American steel, at least 60% of it has to be produced within one of the three countries. The Democrats in the U.S. Congress want to put it to 90%, but 60% of it is what it is now. Secondly, currency manipulation. It's not really an issue for Canada or Mexico, but it is an issue with China. That will be there. And the question of state-owned enterprises, because China has half of all the steel production in the world, and there is no other industry where China dominates, as they do in steel, like 75% of the state-owned enterprises. So that issue will be addressed. So generally, I don't think the concerns are quite as bad as when you first, your staff first posed the question on steel and NAFTA. Question four. It's very interesting, like, if you're a professor, now you're having the exam, like, learning how to play the violin in public. How big are the problems of steel dumping and unfair trade for Canadian steel industry? Is enough being done to address these? I don't think dumping is the biggest problem. There is this overhang of Chinese steel, because it has 50% of the capacity. But China ships six times more steel to Korea than they do to the United States. The prices may be the issue, because when you have half the production, you determine the marginal price. So I don't think dumping, dumping in the classic sense of dumping goods, is for Canada the major problem, but the prices are. Now, there's a World Steel Association Committee dealing with how to manage down that excess capacity. Most of the Chinese capacity that was built, was built for roads and bridges, rebar, relatively low-end steel. That's sort of stuff you push around the world. There is also a finally, there's a permanent appetite in the steel industry to get into blaming. Somehow, it's built into the chips. The Aussies may be a source of the major problem. This is the argument of Gonzalez, the CEO of Cleveland Cliffs. Goldman Sachs, among others, said, this steel thing in China's on a roll until 2030. The Australians built that mining capacity and the infrastructure and everything to do that. And then eight years into that cycle, it collapsed. So Australian iron ore, metallurgical coal, and iron ore is being shipped to China just to keep the doors open and pay their banks. And it's the cheap iron ore and metallurgical coal that is keeping otherwise uncompetitive steel mills in China still producing via the Aussies. It's an argument worth thinking about. But as I say, dumping is not the issue that I think it is often booted around in the media. Question five. How important is it for Canada to have a healthy domestic steel industry? Well, does manufacturing matter? If it does, steel is the material backbone of manufacturing. We are still, for all the high flute and commentary in this late downtown Toronto, we are an economy of stuff. We consume stuff. 80% of consumer stuff has steel in it, even the iPhone, right? And, well, it's a bit of a passe, but it's still out there in economic theory. It doesn't matter if your economy produces computer chips or potato chips. I think that's absolutely wrong, but that is out there. Because the real economy, steel, is an economy of stuff. As I said, 80% of consumer goods has some element of steel in them. And 80%, we talk a lot about innovation. 85% of innovation takes place in manufacturing, combination of patenting, R&amp;D expenditures, et cetera. For any decent work, these are good jobs. I'm a Catholic. Pope Francis says, the solution to poverty is not individual acts of charity, no matter how worthy those are. Solution to poverty is decent work, decent wages, dignity in the workplace, benefits, et cetera. So this is the kind of work you would want to have in the economy. Question six. Why has DeFasco been able to remain consistently more profitable than Algoma and Stelco? If Woody Allen said 90% of success is showing up, 90% of it is just arriving at the right spot at the right time. The real tipping point between Stelco and DeFasco happens in 1953, when DeFasco introduces the first basic oxygen furnace. There was something in the drinking water of Canada in 1953, because the two key steel technologies of the whole pole four period, the basic oxygen furnace and the continuous caster, were introduced in Canada before Europe, before America, and before Japan. Five years ahead of the Japanese, 16 years ahead of the Americans. So the oxygen furnace required DeFasco, because they were the newbies on the lot, to go out and develop a different customer interface. Secondly, they used to do food. They used to do tin cans. But they knew about coatings. And the Japanese automotive revolution was largely about coated steels, and they just had both of those things at the same time. And they also licensed technology, kept their lab in the plant. Stelco had its lab in an ivory tower. And finally, the HR practices. It's not primarily the union, non-union thing, because DeFasco followed the wage patterns, usually with a three-year lag, as Stelco did. But they had a more inclusive culture. They did a much better job of training, to this day. They actually view training as an investment, not a cost. And they're prepared to invest $250,000 in an apprentice, because that's what it costs to get an apprentice trained. So it was the combination of those HR practices. It wasn't just the union, non-union thing. Then finally, the global steel connection. This is an industry where scale still matters. And they became part of Arsenal of Metal, DeFasco did. And that matters for scale, matters for technology transfer, it matters for capital investment. And within Arsenal of Metals has produced steel in 53 countries. They benchmark flat-rolled steel off three places. Kent in Belgium, DeFasco in Hamilton, and Tabaro in Mexico. Question seven. What can the council, or the municipality more generally, do to assist Algoma to help ensure its future viability? One is, successful companies have a stakeholder philosophy. And the community is a stakeholder. It is part of the steel industry as much as the mill is. And that shouldn't be underestimated, because you're part of the industry. And for all the reasons why people think the steel industry's gone away, it hasn't. It's here. But the municipality, the city, is a stakeholder in that, for obvious reasons. Secondly, Canada needs a strong steel mayor's voice. If you just left it, I can say, as a former chief economist in Queen's Park, if you just left it at the cabinet tables, you could have steel, you could have ice cream. Wouldn't matter. Somebody's got to be that voice, and I think that voice is going to come from the local communities. Thirdly, support the new Cistec Training Consortium, which will look at apprenticeship training. One of the problems we have with apprenticeship is young people getting their hours in. And what happens, a particular problem for SMEs, or small firms, people be able to get their hours in, and you get the consortium to be designated the employer for the purpose of continuity of employment. And that's something you could usually do. And finally, something maybe for your economic development, look at how steel-consuming companies are looking at the future in this region. Anyway, that's an outline, Mr. Mayor. I'm very much aware that people have different eyes on the steel industry. At a recent university event, I was introduced as being Canada's leading steel expert, academic steel expert. Pause. Then the guy says, all the others are dead. Thank you for your time.
We're grateful you're here, Doctor. I expect we'll probably have some questions for you. I would give the floor to Counselor Butland if he'd like to begin. Counselor Butland?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And finding you arrived here, Peter, it's good to have you. And it's been a while trying to get Peter here for a whole host of reasons. It's not only for us, I think it's for the community to learn about the most important industry in our community. And at first, we wondered, well, how much is it going to cost for us to get Peter here? He's here basically gratis expenses, so...
Well, I made a little reference to Marconi's, but...
Thanks, Peter, for coming. And he's very familiar with Sioux State Marine and the steel mill, and some of our cyclical actions. He's involved with Leo Gerard, Jack Kostrowski, God rest his soul, and a whole, everybody in the Sioux State Marine Steel knows Peter. I guess my question would be, what is the state of our mill? Is this an appropriate question to ask? Are we in good shape, or does it require a whole lot of investment?
What do those guys say in front of the US Senate? I'll be prepared to answer that in a private session. Let me answer some of it. The period when SR came in, if you had gone around this mill seven years ago, five, seven years ago, and come back again, you'd amaze at how good a job they've done on introducing new technology, aligning things. It is a very, it's a good asset. The problem is that, I think, that destabilization, that's real. So when you, basically, the contracts where they had to overpay, and Cleveland Cliffs insisted they overpaid, like, $400 million, it drained all the working capital out of the company. Anybody who runs a business knows that your working capital is one of those things, this cyclical thing is, it goes up and down. But working capital helps you go through those things. If you had drained all the working capital out of it, you're in terrible shape. You're just vulnerable, okay? I think that those new steels that are in automotive, and that's not the sweet spot of Algoma, but they're on the fringes of it. But pushing out into those other areas, residential, don't try to communicate with DeFasco in automotive. automotive, it's tough. But pushing those same ideas out in certain ways in energy, construction, residential, go into a kitchen, you see all kinds of steel, steel appliances, et cetera. So they have to push the product development. So the technical side, it's a good mill. But yes, straighten out the financial side, I think they're getting there. I won't go into detail, but I think they're getting there. It's going to take a little while longer. And ironically, because things got better. You know, you see, if someone's trying to sell a house, it's the same, suddenly prices go up by forty percent, nobody wants to make a move. And in Queen's Park or in Ottawa, hey, gee, if they're in the black, we don't have to, they may know there's going to have to be a move on the regulatory side, on the pensions, on some capital expenditure things that they've already approved in Ottawa and in the provinces. But nobody wants to go first, right? Things get better, good, because you can survive, but it takes the heat off, not be the best view of human nature, but it takes the heat off. I think we're going to get some more pressure, not disastrous pressure, but pressure that will bring these things to conclusion in the next few months.
Go ahead, Counselor Butland.
Good others, I'm sure. Southwood lumber industry, the federal government has responded to the tune of $867 million. Is it our best interests, although it may be, I don't know, I can hardly say it's premature, but should we be going to the federal government at this point in time saying the steel industry needs help, will need help in the near future?
Well, there's been a lot of these discussions, because this process has been going on for a couple of years. There's a number of things that have been essentially and unofficially indicated from the federal and the provincial government that I think are very important. The question is, when you move into a period of fundamental uncertainty, risk a risk, we all get used to calculating risk and making decisions about that. But fundamental uncertainty that Mr. Trump's administration releases creates a problem for everybody. So pushing forward on the things that they have done, that's good. I think there's provincial level, there's something particular on the pension side they can do. On the reinvestment side, because even if they settle out the current restructuring, financial arrangements, you're still going to need reinvestment. And there are commitments already from the federal government, and we can't let them forget those. I'll keep doing that. And then we'll just have to see. I don't want to get into scare tactic, but among the craziest things to me is the Buy America study for the Gordie Howe Bridge, Gordie Howe Bridge and the new bridge, where Canada has paid for the American side as well as the Canadian side. And some jackass wants to apply Buy America, but we're paying for all of it. There's something wrong in this movie. So that would be the next flashpoint, in my view. That's not too indirect.
Thank you, Counselor Butland. Counselor Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that presentation. That was very good, very informative. I'm going to apologize if my question shows that I didn't fully understand what you were talking about, but you'd mentioned the Aussies and how essentially their suppliers are keeping some of the Chinese mills afloat. In other words, they're supplying raw materials at a low price. Is that a regional phenomenon? Is it too much to ask that that oversupply be shared throughout, or what's the complexities of the raw material side of it?
The complexity is this, you certainly have an oversupply capacity in China. Now, China is managing that down. The problem is they have so much new stuff. They took out about forty-five million tons of steel, of obsolete stuff last year. Probably say so much new stuff has come out on, the net number's still, now this is a turnover year, when the reductions start to be real, okay? So in terms of competitive segment, you've got uncompetitive steel mills in China producing and dumping stuff out at low price. And again, my argument, you can push back a little, is that it's the price side more than the direct dumping. But they're only able to stay in that game because the Aussies are dumping off all their iron ore and metallurgical coal at just disastrous prices, because they're running these mines just to pay the bank, they're not making any money. Does that help on clarifying the connection?
Yeah, so is it because of transportation costs that the steel industry in Canada can't take advantage of that oversupply of iron ore and whatnot in Australia, or are they committed to the Chinese manufacturing sector?
Well, it's a long way away.
Yeah.
The major shipments of Canada are metallurgical coal from Alberta and British Columbia into, and in seaborne coal. Canada and the Aussies basically fight it out for global. And the Aussies have about sixty-five percent, we have thirty-five percent, so that's much to do. And for technical reasons, you can't use the Australian coal in Canadian mills, there's a chemical engineering problem with it.
One final question. You say it's cyclical, and you touched on that the price of steel should be dropping. As an economist, are you forecasting a downturn in the economy and how that would affect the steel industry? And my second question, my final question would be, everybody's aware of the infrastructure needs in North America, I think you touched on it. How does that bode specifically for a company like Algoma Steel?
Well, on the first point, I wouldn't say that they should go down, it's simply they just are going to go down. They're going to go down maybe a hundred dollars a ton. It's not to three hundred and twenty dollars of where it was, you know, twenty months ago or something. I'm not trying to scare people. But it will go down. Our problem is we've got a slow-moving economy. Congressional budget office projects the American economy will grow by 1.3 percent. That creates all sorts of problems, including jobs for young people, how are we going to finance pensions, hospital foundations, and everything else you can name, that's a problem. So we have to look at ways. So it will go down, but I'm not saying disastrous down. There is a price, unless somebody's repealed the laws of economics, somewhere around twenty-four to thirty-six months out there, there's going to be a recession of some kind. And if we have highly leveraged companies, even if the restructuring works at Stelco, it works at Algoma, there's going to be a vulnerability out there. So the question is how much new initiative and innovation to put into the system between that twenty-four and thirty-six months. Your second question was...
The second question is...
Infrastructure.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is overblown. The, Trump's infrastructure plan is for a trillion dollars, spent over ten years. And it's in all kinds of trouble, and the Republicans won't pass it. It's going to be passed by the Democrats. The problem is, China had a $1.6 trillion infrastructure build just last year, calendar 2016, in one year. That's what, $2.6 trillion. That didn't lift the whole global industry. So it's such an important asset. I think we need an infrastructure build, it's probably ten times what anyone's really talking about. And when interest rates are virtually zero, you can do this.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. Yes, very good presentation. I just want to make two comments. I'm glad that you alluded to two points about the car manufacturing and how you need to be in the alleyway or area. I was fortunate enough to attend the Great Lakes Economic Forum or Conference, which was held in Detroit, and of course, they talked about the car manufacturing. And they had representatives from all the states and provinces that actually touched the Great Lakes. I'm not sure if you were there, I can't remember. And they mentioned about car manufacturing, of course, and they were talking about a part goes across the border approximately six times, back and forth, back and forth, before it ends up in the final car. And the reason I bring this up is because a lot of the Canadians and Americans were worried about the free trade, about what Trump is thinking of doing, about the border tax. And a number of senators were there saying, "Do not worry, because if you take that example of one car part going cross, how are you going to regulate that?" And the other piece that I want to basically promote is Sioux College here has an excellent robotic program. And when they graduate the students from that program, guess who's hiring those students? It's the car companies in Detroit that are coming up, the I-75, crossing our bridge in Axley. And last year, they came up and said, "We only have a budget for five students." They hired fifteen, approximately. So thank you for saying NAFTA and clarifying that.
I'll strike some of those points by saying, location has always been important, steel industry. But, and it used to be, where are the assembly plants? I'm going to challenge you. In the future, I want to know, where are the engineers? Because that's where you get to the design stuff.
That's an interesting perspective. Counselor Fatah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. SR versus Stelco. Just give us a quick kind of overview of where we're at compared to Stelco and...
Did you get into the process, Counselor Fatah, the CCA process?
I guess what I'm asking is, where Stelco has now landed, is, in your opinion, is it primarily because of the parent company that owned that company during the time that it owned it, that it took it down this road, that we sort of wish that we don't end up?
It's always convenient to look out the rearview mirror, and we may have made a lot of decisions differently if we had that foreknowledge. In the period, Canada had, the post-war Canadian steel story, one of the great economic success stories in the history of the country. They're all Canadian companies, Canadian-managed, Canadian-owned. And in two years, between 2006 and 2008, every one of them was sold off. Now, it's part of a larger international steel thing. The interesting thing is, in every case but one, Stelco. They were sold off by international companies wanting to build on good Canadian assets, okay, to build a beachhead into the North American steel market. The case of Stelco was the one that went the other way. US Steel bought and operated Stelco like a classic Canadian, a US branch plant. So all the others invested in engineering, invested in upgrading facilities, et cetera. It was the outlier, okay? And you've just wasted ten years. So now they're trying again, and they have a strong advantage in automotive steel, so that's to their advantage. But they, basically, US Steel stripped out all the product development, marketing stuff, and they stripped out all the engineers. And now they have to rebuild it. Now, they happen to be in a very strong part of the auto market, and that's going to be key for them. But I'm saying, in all the takeovers, the Stelco thing was different because it was a classic US branch plant strategy. And it became, we always thought Stelco was the big deal because it was the big cheese in the shop. In North American terms, Stelco became a tier-two asset. And their big ones were Gary, Indiana, the southern states, Fairfield, and the, I forgot the third, but it was a tier-two asset. We always thought Stelco was the crown jewel. But it was, you know, maybe looking back, were the problem, that if you knew that was going to happen, Canadians shouldn't have let a prime industry like that just be taken over the foreigners without a peep to be blown up.
In terms of dumping, like, I think it's safe to say that our MP is taking dumping, especially Chinese dumping in North America, very seriously. You're indicating that it's not as big a deal as it appears.
It's nowhere, now, you can be in a specific product line where that is a problem, and I can't get inside their books to tell you that, okay? But so both, but the larger story is, it's not, Chinese don't, these are smart birds, not dummies. They're not going to let their position in the WTO get blown up by some little provincial or municipal steel company. So they don't ship that much steel directly. Now, you can be in a particular product line, and right now, the hot spot is oil company tubing their goods, tubes for energy. But outside of that, they're not here. Now, but the price effect can be what kills you, right? They don't, they don't have to ship the steel, it's just the pricing is what kills you in businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of, in terms of what's been happening with Mexico, in terms of the billions of dollars of infrastructure that's been built there around Monterrey, Mexico, there's no going back, is there? Even though, from what I've heard, and maybe you've heard the same, is that the satisfaction level as far as the type of production and type of quality of production in Mexico has been less than what they would expect. Do you see that ever turning back? I know companies like Magna International, which is Ontario-based, is making a headway down there, because you go where the action is, and in Mexico, over the last several years, it's been expanding leaps and bounds.
There's been a change, particularly in the last five or eight years in Mexico, where just a huge, what they've done in their community college system, what they've done in their apprenticeship system, the quality levels, particularly as the European companies come in, big players like Bosch, Volvo, Volkswagen, et cetera. The quality levels now have been raised quite high. You're not going to beat them on quality. What has happened in the auto industry is you now actually have done a big partitioning. Mexico is going to be a place for small cars. They produce, like, Beamers, Mercedes, but they're almost all shipped, they don't come to North America, they go outside, they go mostly to Latin America and South America. So the industry, it's been a bloody process. So you've got large cars and trucks and SUVs in the central, the middle of that automotive alley, Canada, the United States. Small cars in Mexico, and specialized European high-priced cars, Beamers and Mercedes, in the Carolinas down there. It's sort of, it's never finished, but that's sort of the way it's sort itself. I don't see that itself changing.
Just one final question regarding Mexico. Because of NAFTA, of course, and us having very good relationships with Mexico, are they buying the amount of steel that we would like? Is there, do you think, again, in your opinion, is there that relationship where we're able to take advantage of the demand for steel from Mexico in terms of the auto industry?
Well, it's rough justice, but the steel thing is in relative balance now, after a lot of disruption. It's in relative balance. The question is, where do the new steels go? And the new steels, like when I showed you that auto alley, that's where they're going into. So an example, the most profitable segment in the auto industry is the SUV. And the combination, tell me when I'm boring you, the combination of the cafe, lateral standards, and the new side crash standards and the highway safety, none of the SUV platforms of any of the companies, GM, Ford, Toyota, or any of them, can satisfy both at once. And those things start to come in 2019. And along comes a steel company, Arslar Metal, that solves it. The B pillar, the thing that's hiding your head when you drive, they, so all the engineers said, "We can't get the formula." But just have to think of what that means. You have to redesign every SUV of every company and every platform. That, you're looking at Armageddon. And a steel company comes, "No, we've got two new steels that taken, all those, they combined into one, one part, five other parts, and they solved the problem. They squared the circle." That's where steel companies get into the design process, okay? It's called a door ring. They actually solved that, and that was the whole, the whole segment. And you get success stories. There's a little company in St. Thomas, Ontario, that has just saved the bacon, the whole luxury SUV segment, for the Ford Motor Company, because the way they're using the materials, they redesigned the backend. So there's success stories out there.
Okay, Counselor Schumaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You sort of answered one of my questions already when you said that in the future, it's not going to be so much location, but where the engineers are. But in your graph that you showed the automotive valley in North America, Sioux State Marine was sort of at the very fringe of that alley. Would you say our location is, perhaps it was just the map you were using, but would you say our location is fine, or is it not, you know, is it...
Well, it's a problem, but it's not, it is a problem. But the locational issue is fifteen, eighteen dollars a ton in transportation costs. But you're sitting right down beside the interstate, over that bridge, and the first auto plant, so it's not the OEMs you want to target on, you target on the supply chain. And you start that at Saginaw and start going south. So you've got a clear run down a basically empty interstate, and you've got a fifteen, eighteen-dollar-a-ton locational problem, you can engineer that out. I said, "Go to where the engineers are," because you need to... So, I said, go to where the engineers are, because you need to tap into the development, that's the point.
Absolutely.
Don't just count where the assembly plant is.
Yeah, yeah, no, I totally agree with you there. Not that I would even come close to being able to disagree with you, so.
You could give that a capable try, Counselor Shoemaker.
Having had to present to cabinets in the past, I have some familiarity with this.
The other thing is, is there anywhere in our mill, and I'm not sure how familiar you are, you are, you know, specific to the processing and sort of cost structure at our mill, where we are really an outlier in terms of competitiveness? Is there, is there any cog in the wheel of our mill where we are an outlier in competitiveness?
In a good way, outlier, in a good way or a challenging way?
In terms of, in terms of straight cost competitiveness, you're probably the lowest, with that direct strip production thing, the lowest-cost producer in North America. It's a big deal. But, the limitation, you have to upgrade that to get a higher quality, okay? You can be the lowest-cost producer, but you're stuck in the commodity end of the market. So, there's, there's things you can do in the process. Ahead of that, technical term is ladle metallurgy, to up, basically to go up the value scale to the higher-grade steel. So, the basic production thing, that's part of what they did at Compton last time, where they took about three tries, they got that direct, that thing hums. And you make, also make different deals. I mean, Stelco is short on slab, Algo is surplus slab. Algo is short on coke, Stelco's surplus on coke. I'm not going to win the economic Nobel Prize for economics for that one, but there's, there's a trade to be made, right? So, there's much more complementarity between those than you might think. Now, you have to get through this restructuring thing, and then I think a different set of discussions take place. But yet, so yes, it's very good generally, but when you say, what, where do we want to be in five years? You have to upgrade pot and the ladle metallurgy to do higher grades, because you can win, but you're down to products that have such a small margin, you don't want to stay there for the rest.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you have Counselor Kapodich.
Thank you, Mayor Provanzano. And thanks, Mr. Worian, excellent presentation. I totally agree with you with SeaStack too, by the way, and about the apprenticeships and about the investment that FASCO has made into their workforce. I think it's just the cost of doing business and moving forward. But I guess I want to ask you a question about the, with all the new and emerging smelting reduction processes that went online in the world in the past decade, our integrated facility we have here in our location, is there a cost advantage or not for us being here? Or is it, would it be a mini-mill technology, for example? Would it be more cost-effective to have a facility located here, or...
This is a, a big-deal strategic choice. You could, I will argue against it, you could opt to do a mini-mill electric furnace thing and get the next level of cost squeezed out, but that's going to condemn you to that bottom end of the grade, lower grades. There is something about the chemistry. These new high-flutened steels, you have to make a majority of that out of iron ore and blast furnace, an integrated production. Now, there's twenty-five, fifteen-year thing, what you do about blast furnace, environmentally, but you just can't get there, those higher grades of steel, the really complex stuff, without having an integrated production thing. So, to make that decision, you might, but it's going to condemn you to a future where you're chasing the long-range end of the market. And that has both the employment and the value, declining value added attached to that. So, I wouldn't go there, I mean, circumstances, I force you there, but I wouldn't go there anytime soon. It actually goes, it's in the metallurgy, it's in the chemistry.
I find it interesting that an iron-making technology has been for well over a century, and it's still a cost-effective way of producing molten metal.
Right.
And it's absolutely incredible.
If you bought a new car this year, sixty percent of those steels didn't exist five years ago. So, this has been moving on at a faster pace, and it's accelerating. I'd more love to have Paul Compradis, is that in the family?
Oh, the distant battles in the old country.
Counselor Bruni?
Mr. Mayor, and I guess Counselor Shoemaker asked, kind of asked a question. I mean, that we, our steel plant has been around for hundreds of years, and we haven't really had a manufacturing company with car parts coming to the Sioux here. And you alluded that the cost would be approximately fifteen, eighteen dollars more a ton in today's...
Transportation costs.
Transportation costs.
I.e., to get it from here to Oakville.
Mm-hmm. And is that one stumbling block for a manufacturing company not to come here, being so close...
Well, I'm only speaking there about the transportation disadvantage for the steel itself. So, the question's going to be, where, where do you find the customers for this? And in terms, even in southern Ontario, in, there's only eight to ten percent of this, so, big change has been, the auto companies are just really doing design and assembly, okay? And that's a tough, it's a tough business. I mean, for Toyota in Cambridge, Ontario, just outside of Kitchener, the only place in the world they produce the Lexus, outside of Japan. They, they value added, they only make thirty-five hundred bucks per vehicle on that. There's a lot of claims on that thirty-five hundred bucks. So, eighty-five percent of what you get in a car is not made by a car company, it's made in the supply chain, number one. Number two, of that group of companies, eighty percent of them are small and medium-sized firms, okay? And who is up to these new technologies? They've got the software design tools, all that sort, about eight to ten percent. So, you want to find those firms, and some of those firms are going to be in Saginaw. So, because you can deliver into Detroit, even upper Indiana, for a very competitive transportation cost. So, I wouldn't go nuts about, you know, why not there's a stamping plant. I'd find those customers who are going to dance to the new music, and if they're anywhere between upper Indiana and here, you can supply them. It's actually find the, who can dance with molecules is, I can have a topic if, the dean likes this stuff. Where are those plants? And what sort of partnerships do you need with a training consortium, with the college, an R&amp;D capacity, R&amp;D shop, that sort of stuff? That's where it will come. Because even though in Michigan, Detroit, or the Detroit region of Michigan, direct manufacturing of automobiles is down by something like seventy-five percent, at the same time, new patents and IP have gone like that, because it's a design center. I said, you want to know where, the old steel locational thing was, where's the assembly plant? We want to know where the engineers are, because that's who we have to dance with.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
It's interesting, because you've come back to that point a number of times, about the importance of that human resource.
Absolutely. At the end of the day, this is about, at the end of the day, this is about making a human resource better. It's about people.
Let me ask you this then, Dr. Worian, there's two points up there that point to things that we could support and help on. What do you see a steel mayor's voice looking like? And how could we specifically support this SeaStack trading?
Well, the mayor's voice is really important because to get the politicians' attention, particularly at the cabinet level, say, this is important to real people in a real community. And in ironic turn of fate, Trump's message was actually about that. You have to give him credit. You'll not be surprised, I'm not one of his supporters, but, but the issue is real, okay? And that's where it's real. So, getting that voice, this isn't about some abstract macroeconomic model and what you put in the equation. It's about people and an economy. The training thing, if you think HR stuff is really important, this training thing, particularly apprentices and such, where we need that, it grew out of Hamilton, where they needed to try to support smaller firms, really. And this, the way our system works, overcoming the continuity of employment for getting their hours in, the way the feds count, is terribly important. And you get the consortium, you do two things. You get the consortium to be the employer, so people get their hours in. Secondly, they rotate through different places, so you're not just learning about Jack's machine shop, you're getting, building up in that area. And for most ordinary people, they will make labor market decisions in terms of a regional labor market. The Sioux, I've been coming up here for thirty years, I didn't just arrive this morning, has always had a fairly captive labor market, between the paper mills, steel mills, the power stuff, all that sort of stuff. It got destabilized, a massive downturn in the nineties. So, guys went down to Windsor or something, but none of them came back. There's something like a magnet about this. I have a summer house in Newfoundland, I know what the magnetic pull of community identity is. But Alberta also destabilized, you know, the attraction of going to work for seventy-six dollars an hour as a junior welder. So, you had to find a new way to build, because if you got the skills, the jobs would be there, I think. Okay, that's, that's the bet I'm making. So, building that, because you've got, most people, since any of the employers when they hire, will look around the regional labor market, okay? And that's what you have to strengthen. In terms of the fancy innovation stuff, why do some regions do better than others? Comes down to three things, and almost none of them are quote "economic" in the traditional sense. One is high-skilled local labor markets. Two, intersector or industry transfers of knowledge. And three, civic governance. How does it govern itself? You have a communitarian government here, we hurt all these folks, okay? I'm the only person on the planet that's got four degrees from Waterloo and another from MIT, so I know something about Waterloo. They have this Waterloo thing, and they all sing the song, they sing it the same tune all day long, including the governor general. But it is about communotech as a mechanism. So, civic governance is absolutely important, this stuff. It doesn't fit into an algorithm, but it's vital in the long term.
It's an important message. So, Doctor, we certainly appreciate your willingness to come here, and we thank you for your time. I think that was a very productive educational session, and I can commit to you, so long as you take my calls, we'll be talking more about some of the things we talked about tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, before we move on to the consent agenda, Mr. Clerk, I think we should maybe move eight point three up, because I think we have some delegates here who want to hear what happens with the motion that Counselor Hoopanen and Shoemaker brought. But before you get to that, I do want to recognize Don Scott. I saw Don Scott here, he's left the room, well, then we're going to move on, we'll recognize him when he gets back. Oh, there he is. So, Mr. Scott, it's come to my attention that you are retiring soon, and I want to take time, because I saw you over there, to thank you for your thirty years of service to the municipality. I've only been here for two and a half years of those, but I've always found you to be a very supportive and engaged and accommodating employee, so I want to recognize that and thank you for your service, and really frankly, tell you we're sorry you're retiring, but you earned it, and we hope you have a fantastic retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been my privilege to work with all of you and other generations of council over the last thirty years, and I've thoroughly enjoyed it. It's been my honor to perform the work for you.
Well, we'll see after we're done with six point one-three. Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, if we can go to eight point three, and then we'll get to the consent agenda?
Under eight point three, animal exhibitions and performances, a motion by Councilors Hoopanen and Shoemaker. Whereas a bylaw to prohibit the wild or exotic animal exhibitions and performances in the city of Sault Ste. Marie was passed November nineteenth, two thousand and twelve, and whereas not included in the list of animals in Schedule A to bylaw two thousand and twelve, excuse me, thirteen are domestic animals such as horses and dogs, and whereas traveling circuses claim that positive reinforcement is the method of training the animals used to entertain an audience, and whereas positive reinforcement for animals being trained in a circus endure varying levels of punishment, neglect, and deprivation with limited access to food and water, and whereas touring circuses cover thousands of miles a year carrying animals from site to site in transports and cages with their only respite being rehearsals or performing, and whereas an animal is an animal regardless of whether it is classified as domestic or exotic, now therefore be it resolved that the existing bylaw be amended to include wild, exotic, or domestic.
So, Counselor Hoopanen, we'll let you speak to this, because it's your motion. Before you do, I just have a question, and hopefully you can speak to it.
Sure.
I actually got quite a bit of outreach on this motion, and the outreach all related to and questioned whether or not the motion would prohibit something like the Royal Canadian Mounted Police ride and things like, you know, dog shows, which are enjoyed by a lot of people.
Absolutely.
Also, horse shows at Strathkill Park. So, there was, there was a significant concern that we don't catch some things here that a lot of people in our community want to participate in and really look forward to and enjoy. So, if you, in your comments, if you could...
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing that up, because I had also had calls and emails regarding the same. It's quite the opposite, actually. I would encourage people to see and go to those events rather than go to the circuses where they use animals for entertainment. I believe that on the, the motion, if we reworded it just slightly and put as whereas a bylaw to prohibit traveling circuses to use, not to use animal exhibitions, I think that might clarify. A traveling circus, in my definition, is a company of acrobats, trained animals, clowns that give perform, give performances typically in a large tent or arena in a series, series of different places. So, the RCMP, I don't believe they have any clowns in their, in their entertainment events, and the dog kennel club, they don't either. So, I, I think we can distinguish a traveling circus and definitely any of the kennel clubs or the dog shows, the intention of this motion was, was not to target any of those, because I think they're all great. In fact, I attend the dog show. Increasingly, countries and provinces and cities all over the world are banning the use of animals, both domestic and wild, for entertainment purposes such as circuses. Horses and ponies are gregarious animals and extremely social. After being unloaded from the horse transports, they are often confined, intense and tethered to a transport between the two, excuse me, tethered to the transports on the concrete ground. Behavioral abnormalities have been observed in circus horses. What I did a couple of weeks ago, we had a circus that visited the city, and I went down because I wanted to see what, what kind of condition the animals were in. And when I got there, I saw the three horses, and they were tethered between two transports on the concrete, and they had no food and they had no water, and they were dirty. And I tried to talk to the trainer, and he obviously didn't want to talk to me. So, I left it, and I sort of confirmed my feelings on how the animals are treated. Basically, when I was approached by the resident in the city, Catherine McCray, I did some research on this. This wasn't something that was pre-planned, I did some research. And contrary to claims by the circuses, there seems little evidence that animals enjoy the time in the ring. Circus animals do not willingly stand on their heads, jump through rings of fire, or ride bicycles. They don't perform these trips because they want to, to do any of these meaningless acts in their own natural environment. Excuse me, the only reason circus animals perform is because they are afraid of what will happen to them if they don't. The circus would like you to think the animals perform because they are positively reinforced with food and praise, et cetera. There is no such thing as positive reinforcement for animals in the circus, only various levels of punishment, neglect, and deprivation. That's not the same, that's not saying every circus, I'm saying that this is the majority, and this is, I haven't found anything positive on my research, so I can only go with what I've been able to do, research. These animals have limited access to food and water in order, in order to, in order, they have limited access to food and water in order to will them to perform. Training circus animals involves physically, involves physically punish them, punishing them. These training pr... These training practices generally will be hidden from public view to make the audiences believe these animals want to and are willing to perform. Because these animals have been conditioned through abusive training sessions, they know that the refusal to obey in the ring will result in severe punishment later. Circuses are infamous for abuse, whether it be international, excuse me, intentional or simply through the environmental, environment of the animals that they're forced to live in. To those of us who respect the welfare and lives of individual animals, many of the acts performed by domestic or wild animals are simply unnatural and fundamentally wrong. Animals in circuses are, have been banned in 40 countries and 22 U.S. states, but only 28 municipalities in Canada. Animal-free circuses are becoming increasingly popular, animal-free circuses are becoming increasingly popular worldwide. As one example, there is a company in Montreal who has an animal-free circus that they combine theater with acrobatic performances, poetry, circus thrills, acrobats, clowns, jugglers, trapeze artists, and musicians. And it's animal-free. And there's probably about 18 that I found in Ontario. So it is becoming more the norm. However, there are quite a few municipalities that are not on board, but if this could be a start, I think it would be a good thing. When I hear, when I hear the comments that the kids will miss seeing the animals, my answer is try visiting Mockingbird Hill Farm. Farmer Bob has, he's got horses, he's got dogs, he's got chickens and, and see the way an animal should be living. I also want to say that the Kennel Club and the Horse and Pony Club, they're totally not included in any of this. And if we have to reword my motion to, to make sure that it is clear to everybody, then so be it. I hope I do get the support of council to exclude, or to include the domestic animals in the traveling circuses. I believe that it's neither acceptable or appropriate to have animals performing in circuses in the 21st century. Again, I hope I have council's support of this motion. I'm not sure if we are voting on this motion tonight. I know...
Well, you would be.
Okay, so, but it would come back.
Let me propose, just to the mover and the second, if this passes, you're just from the council floor putting words in a bylaw, which I think is a precedent we should be careful of. I think what the motion should do is ask legal to report back on how to amend the bylaw to, to achieve the end you want to achieve. If it's a friendly amendment to both of you, what would happen is legal, having heard, read the motion, understand what you're trying to get to, would bring the bylaw back to us and then we would vote when it comes back to us on that new bylaw. So this motion would be giving direction to the legal department to consider how to amend the bylaw and report back to us. Are you friendly with that?
Yes, that's, that's fair, Mayor. May I also ask Melanie, when we could possibly expect this? I know you're busy, but I'm just curious.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, through to Counselor Hoopanen. We can have this ready for you for the July meeting.
Oh, that's wonderful. All right, that's great. Thank you very much.
So that's a friendly amendment, Counselor Shoemaker. Any other discussion on that motion, counsel? Seeing Counsel Fadde?
Just a question, just, it seems that, like, there seems to be a feeling or an automatic assumption that all circuses mistreat animals. It just seems, it seems like we're all, this, when this first, when this item first came up several years ago about with the marine lands and, and the circuses, it seems like there's a blanket statement that says all animals are being mistreated. It just, it just seems like something that, I don't know, it just seems odd just the way, the way it's being addressed. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, I mean, it just seems like we're just automatically assuming that traveling, animals that are traveling in a circus-type environment are mistreated. Do you find that kind of, I mean, do you believe that that's the case? All animals in circuses are all being mistreated?
Are you, are you personally asking me that question?
I'm asking for your opinion, yes, sir.
So I, I don't think that's all what we're debating. We have a city councillor who is concerned about the treatment of some animals and wants to figure out how to adjust one of our bylaws to address that concern. I think it's a legitimate issue that the city council is raising. And when the bylaw comes back, we'll have some fulsome debate at that point on whether it's appropriate change to make. And I think at that point, if you wanted to argue that circuses were awesome...
I'm not going to argue, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to argue. I'm just saying that it just seems like this, this sort of agenda that seems to be happening in the last several years is that a certain group seems to get their agenda out there and it's, it's all one-sided. Have we touched on all types of animal shows? We, we talked about circuses and then we've talked about...
This is the first time, Counsel Fadde, in two and a half years that we've had really any significant discussion about animals on our agenda. So I don't think this is a consistent thing that we're dealing with, that there's some kind of agenda out there that's being kind of pushed on us.
I think though, Mr. Mayor, I think we should make sure that we'll be classify all the various events that are out there. We've just talked, talked about circuses and we've talked about the, the, the dog shows that come here. Maybe there's other types of shows that might, are we going to lump them in with circuses or are we going to...
So Counsel Fadde, I'm not sure where you're going with this. So we're, we're going to vote on the motion that's before us. All in favor? Carrie.
Leave it to me.
Okay. So we are on the consent agenda. Counselor Bruni, can you give me a minute, please? Just take this bar.
Thank you. There you go. Okay. Thanks. So who's the first one that want to start off with the agenda?
Counselor Turco.
Mr. Turco, Counselor Turco. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Acting Mayor?
Sure.
6.4 Vacant Unit Rebate Review. To, I think it's Shelley Shell who has the report here. Is it? Shelley? Yeah, I've had a lot of questions about this over the years, of course, and can you just clarify for our viewers exactly what you're recommending here? I think there's three, three points you make in your, in your report.
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Turco. There is three major changes that we'll be making to the vacancy rebate program. We're going to be ending the industrial and shopping center eligibility. And we're going to be limiting the eligibility period to three years in a 10-year cycle for all other commercial uses. This is a change to address the perpetuity that was happening with the vacancy rebate and it was shown, it was being reflected as more of a disincentive than an incentive-type rebate. The other is that we want to encourage temporary uses and we've defined the uses in the, temporary uses in the guidelines so that it won't impact eligibility for the rebate. So this is, is to encourage like rent-free window space, maybe to a nonprofit, a pop-up that shows for a month that somebody will let them use in their, in their store for a short period of time. The reason for that is that a lot of times the temporary uses eventually become a full-time use.
And through you, thank you, and through you, Mr. Acting Mayor. So does this, is this for one particular area? I wasn't quite sure about the report that you're recommending in Sault Ste., was it the entire city of Sault Ste. Marie?
The vacancy rebate covers the entire city.
And what about, you mentioned, did you say strip malls as well? I didn't see that in the report.
We've defined shopping centers and if I recall, the definition of a shopping center is included in there. I don't have it right in front of me, but there has to be so many rental units and I think it has to be over 25,000 square feet. So a strip mall may or may not remain, depends on how it's owned.
But there are some strip malls through you, Mr. Act, that are receiving this benefit as we speak, correct? There are some people that own strip malls?
Yes, and they may be defined as a shopping center or commercial. It'll vary depending on the size.
Okay, well, how does this address residential properties? Does it or doesn't it?
Residential properties have never had vacancy rebates and it doesn't address residential.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Christian and then Counselor Hollingsworth.
Yeah, just a question through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Michelle. When it comes to, to the mall, the shopping centers, the staff looked at, how should I phrase this? Is there any fear that by lifting this, this rule, that we might put some shopping centers, et cetera, in financial jeopardy?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Christian. We did do, we did have a lot of collaboration and different consultations done during the process. There was direct reach-outs to anybody that received vacancy rebate. There was various sessions and email requests, surveys, et cetera. We have not had a direct reach-out from any shopping centers, so we can't really comment on their thoughts or feelings in regards to this.
So if I can, if I can just sort of paraphrase or even put words in your mouth, the fact that we haven't heard from any shopping centers directly would lead us to think that it may not be an issue where by lifting this, we're, we're going to put anybody in financial jeopardy. And you don't even have to respond to that. Good enough.
Well, thank you for asking and answering the question yourself. Is there anything else?
I might.
Later, okay.
Good.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, through you, Acting Mayor, to Shell. Just for clarification, you mentioned, I believe, that three years out of 10 years they receive a rebate. Is that consecutive or can you just define?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. The three years is three years within a 10-year cycle. So the first year that they apply would be the first year of eligibility and then they can apply two more times within a 10-year span from there.
Okay. So basically, there's a benefit to them because they could potentially have three years to renovate or whatever they're building and so forth. Thank you. And one other question with regards to this, just with regards to commenting on, I think in the report you're talking about vacant uses like charities, not-for-profits. Can you elaborate on that? What are you really referring to?
What I'm referring to is temporary uses and this is something that is new. It's not available currently in the vacant unit rebate. The way the eligibility was set out, it tended to discourage a building from being used for charitable or other uses when there was no rent being received. So that, there was a proposal put forward by one of the team members that was involved with the consultation and the whole process, that we look at ways that we can start and encourage new startup businesses, temporary uses, window displays, et cetera, through the vacancy rebate.
Excellent. I really like that point. I'm working on a project right now with the downtown group about trying to fill up the empty storefronts until a new tenant is found. And so having a charity there, having a not-for-profit, having a pop-up business is seen in other communities. And many people know I really appreciate what Detroit's doing and that's what Detroit's doing as well. It gives them a chance. Thank you.
Counselor Hoopanen?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. To Michelle, it says typically about 120 properties are granted a 30% tax rebate every year, with $375,000 allotted in the 2017 budget. Is the 375,000 the total of the 30%? I'm not, I'm not sure if I understand that.
The vacancy rebate is, in most cases, about 35% of the property taxes, or pardon me, 30 for the commercial, 35% for the industrial, which I think we only had one property. So the 375,000, that equates to the municipal portion of the property taxes that are being paid for that, that individual property that claims a vacancy. There's also a education portion to everybody's taxes. So when you add that in, it's about $500,000 in total for the property. But our share is only the 375.
Okay, that clears it up. Thank you.
Attorney Counsel Fadde?
Mr. Acting Mayor, Shelley, would it be fair to say that this, this vacancy issue that we're addressing here affects the downtown area, maybe perhaps more so than, you know, the Golden Mile? In, in terms of the fact that there are, the, most of the businesses downtown are individually owned, so they don't fall into a category of strip malls where, where they would be That's where, I think that's where the concern should be, at least I think it is. Anyway, I see from the letters there that the, the three letters that were, that were attached to this, this item came from the downtown area. Is there anything that you can tell us in terms of, I know that there's this, there's this thinking that a lot of the empty stores, and I've been to a lot of these stores when I used to work in, in assessment, that I did know that a lot of them, for example, were owned by people from out of town, for example, and the stores would sit there, the, the businesses would sit there, not being improved, just sit there and continue to be an eyesore. So I think the incentive here, I think with this plan would be to create incentive to do something with that business or that building, either sell it to someone who might do it. But it seems like they're being affected the, the hardest, the harshest in terms of this vacancy rebate being removed, though. Would you agree with that, Shelley?
I wouldn't necessarily agree with what you're saying. The vacancy rebate, the way that it was structured previously was a disincentive for individuals to do anything to their properties. So that was one of the main focuses when we started doing our consultation, is how can we restructure it so it becomes an incentive rebate, that we can address some of the issues that you've just stated about the vacancies. As for the vacancies just being downtown, we plotted every area that has vacancies and it's not just downtown it's affected. It's throughout the city. There may be more in the downtown. And we did look at, we do have a CIP already addressing some of the issues in the downtown to help improve it. But this is another little piece that will help and downtown is part of our strategic plan and our strategic direction. So there is a little bit more focus there on what we're doing, but it isn't just a downtown issue.
I just might suggest, just as, as an overview, that what this could create is a situation where properties' taxes will cease to be paid and then a lot of those buildings will end up being the, will fall under a tax sale situation because, like I said, a lot of them, that I've noticed over the years, a lot of them were, were in pretty bad shape and it just wasn't possible for the owners to make a move on them unless they had someone that would be willing to, to rent that space. So it, it may create some urgency for the owners, but at the same time, it's also going to create a situation where you, where you might end up with properties being taken back for taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Fadde. Anybody else? I have a question for Shelley. Shelley, if, if a business on the ground floor is, there's a business located there, but the upstairs, they want to reconfigure and say make it into apartment buildings. Is there a rebate program for them or there's no rebate at all?
Are you referring to the apartment piece?
Yeah.
There is, and I, I think I should refer this to Don McConnell because there's a couple of different programs that are in play and I think he could answer it better.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. As part of the downtown strategy that council approved several months back and more recently the community improvement program council approved at their last meeting, there will be a grant program in place specifically geared to assist owners with renovating upper-floor space to make apartments out of it. We're simply waiting for our final approval from Fed, FedNOR and NOHFC to make those grants available.
Okay. And maybe back to Shelley with a question. It says in the report, 120 properties received a rebate in the Sioux. That's for last year?
Mr. Acting Mayor, that is correct. That is last year's numbers for 2016, which would have, it's a year behind, so that would have been 2015 properties that were paid in 2016.
Okay. And then further down in the report, it says three, 12 properties received a rebate of over $10,000 and three of them were located in the downtown district, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And shopping centers collect 72% of our overall rebate funding. So this is, so the shopping centers are basically receiving the most rebate.
That is correct.
Correct. Okay. Is there any other questions? Okay, Counselor Turco, do you have any other questions?
No, Mr. Acting Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Myers, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Item 6.13, the review of municipal parking. I'll give a chance to Mr. Scott, I think he's hiding behind the monitor there from where I am. And Don, I have to take this opportunity too to thank you so very much for all you've done. Gosh, I don't know how you could be retiring, you're too young. That tells me I should probably be retiring too. But anyway, I've known Don since back at the star days with Sioux Trails and Recreation and certainly watched your career at the city, Don, and you've really been a tremendous asset to us and you know you've helped me a lot with constituents over my 11 years on city council in Ward 2. So thank you so very much and I wish you and Don a very, very best and many years of great happiness. Under the recommendation on page six of your report, item one, I, I think that... Under the recommendation on page six of your report, item one, I think that item one, it's most important to all the residents, first of all, to maintain the current two-hour free parking. So thank you for that. I think that's very consistent. I was surprised when talking to people on this matter that there's a general sense that even though people realize all taxpayers, not only users of the downtown, are paying for this service, most seemed very agreeable and supportive of doing so. I even heard from some of our older constituents, who don't even drive or own a car, but they support it. They see it as a way of supporting the downtown. So thank you for that as the opener of this report here. But an item two, what does it mean? It says lease 13 pay-and-display machines to be considered at capital priority setting workshop of city council for the 2018 budget. What does that mean in terms of, you know, are we going to do it, or are we recommending it, or would that change then that we would no longer have any two-hour? I've got a few questions on it, so I'll let you go with that one first. Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Myers, currently, we do not have a tool in place for our customers to purchase the hour or the all-day parking after the two hours of free parking. So we felt that it would be prudent to try and bring all 13 pay-and-displays on-site at once. Therefore, we can improve our maximum revenues, plus we can provide a better service to the customer.
Okay, so right now, if I understand correctly, I believe, what is the daily rate? The two hours is complimentary, but then what is a day pass? If, I know there's employees in the downtown area that pay to park there and so on.
The current daily pass is $5.
And then there's a monthly as well?
Yes, there's a monthly and there's an annual.
So the monthly would take into consideration that we don't charge for parking at certain hours of the day and certain days of the week, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So this would be something that we would still offer to people, that they could buy a monthly pass?
Absolutely. We've had some customers for decades, very good customers, and we would want to ensure some continuity of service for them.
Okay, so we're not taking away, at least the recommendation is not to take away the two hours, but that people could purchase an additional hourly rate up to that $5 maximum, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just to be clear on that for the public's information. Okay, and then under five, under five in the resolution, points four and five, I just wondered if you could explain what's meant there.
Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Myers, point number four is basically Honk Mobile. I'm not sure if you've seen the commercials on TV. It's a product similar to Honk Mobile, where you can purchase your parking needs through your iPhone or iPad. And this is going to help the individual who may be having their hair done, and they need more than the two hours, they may need three hours, and they can actually purchase this time as they sit in the hair salon.
Okay. Which would address some of the issues that we've had. I know, actually, I was with a group of people last night and was talking to them about this whole issue about parking in the downtown, and it was mentioned that some of the classes and things, or you're dining and you go longer and so on and so forth, so that would be an enabling thing there for those customers. Okay, and then there was a point five that spoke about review current enhancements to parking enforcement. That's further down in the report.
Item 6B?
Oh, I'm looking, it's very difficult on the iPad, because I'm looking at what my notes were, my comments, and then I have to flip back to the report, and I've got 5.0, there was four, there was four, it was just four, that said, explore the possibility for a pilot project to include gates to control entry and access to one or any of the existing municipal parking lots. And then there was point five, review current enhancements to parking enforcement. So I'm not sure if that was from the resolution or from the report, because I'd have to try and go back to those documents. Do they ring a bell to you as to where they are?
Check the resolution.
I think it might be in the resolution then. You've got them, Don? Sorry.
6B, Acting Mayor, to Counselor Myers, the intent of 6B is to have the committee reconvene just to see how we're doing with our implementation of the various recommendations. That's basically what that stands for.
Okay. So to review the current enhancements to parking enforcement, that's just a recommendation for going forward, I think?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor, and again, thank you, Don.
Counselor Christian, and then Counselor Kompadich, and then Counselor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I too want to congratulate Don, and take this opportunity to publicly thank Don. I've known Don for 45 years. We were in high school together, so Don and I have been friends for decades.
That's 40 years ago.
I certainly wish him well, and I know he'll make good use of his retirement time, and you will be missed. I want to compliment you on the report, first of all. I particularly like the idea that you're repurposing part of that parking lot. That, to me, is good, smart urban planning. It's essentially surplus parking, and I can't think of a better way to use it than to repurpose it as an activity area. The one question I have about it, though, and I think if I understand the way you wrote this, the usage rate has never been higher than 70% in that area. Was there any thought about setting aside 20%, making a larger footprint, or is it even needed? Is 13 parking spaces enough?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian, this recommendation evolved through the Recreation and Culture Division, and I had discussions with Virginia McLeod, and these were the dimensions that she provided to me. So yes, there is a potential to expand upon them.
Okay.
But for this report, we wanted to make sure that we had at least enough space for a basketball court.
Jared, no, I think it's a great idea, and I think, as I've said before, with these types of projects, I think it also creates programming opportunities. If we have the space, we can actually do some programming, utilize it more efficiently. So well done. Thank you.
Thank you. On the same matter, we have Counselor Kompadich.
Thank you, Mayor Robyn Zano, and thanks for the report, Don, and happy retirement. Well deserved. Just a question there. Will any of the municipal staff that report to work have to pay to park?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Kompadich, I can't answer that question at this point in time. Basically, if you are in a city-metered area, you're going to have to pay. If you're in a municipal parking lot, you will have your two hours of free parking, and then you will have to pay. So everybody's going to have to pay outside of that two hours of free parking.
So in fact, will municipal staff have to pay for parking?
Well, if a municipal staff goes to Queen Street and parks beside a parking meter, yes, they're going to have to put money in the parking meter. But if you're referring to the parking lots out here?
Yes.
That's, that's an item that's...
That's a separate item, Counselor Kompadich. That's not, this report has nothing to do with where our municipal staff park.
I was just trying to verify that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Counselor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don and Don over here, we worked together on this report, but you didn't tell us when we had the recommendation to have go-forward meetings, that you wouldn't be attending them as you'd be retiring. So you've stuck Don McConnell and I with the go-forward, so thank you very much. Don was, Don Scott, obviously Don McConnell as well, but since Don Scott's leaving, I'll sing his praises. He was a real pleasure to work with on this report. He's been a real pleasure to work with generally, but I worked with him in-depth on this report, and he knows his department, you know, off the top of his hand. He is an extremely seasoned veteran of the parking operations, the transit operations in the city. So thanks for your dedication, thanks for your report.
Thanks, Ma'am.
There were many discussions. How many meetings were there of the committee that studied this issue?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, we were together for a year and a half, so we must have had eight to 10 meetings, but there was a lot of fieldwork, a lot of data collection.
And the, there was a public open house with Mr. Moriari or Mercieri or something along those lines?
Vince Marsey.
Mercieri?
Yes, on February the 8th.
And the feedback we received from there, has it been incorporated into the report?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, absolutely. We heard the constituents of Sussi and Reeloud and Clear, and we feel that this report addresses the needs of the downtown, and we feel that it addresses the needs of the customers wanting to go downtown to park.
What would you say the biggest concern of the public was at these open-house sessions?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, without a doubt, it was the fact that we were looking at possibly eliminating the two hours of free parking, without a doubt. Overwhelming resistance.
And of course, we, through this report, correct me if I'm wrong, are not eliminating that.
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, correct.
And please advise if I'm correct here, but was it not the case that there was a sense among the merchants that they also wanted folks to be able to stay longer than two hours in these lots if that, you know, if they had a way to allow that?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, that was huge. We have gymnasiums, we have hair salons, we have restaurants, we, doctor's office, dentist's office, many, many times, people had to stay longer than the two hours of free parking, and they came to us with a strong voice to address.
And under the current system, you cannot stay for longer than two hours in the lots, is that correct?
Correct.
So the recommendation for the 13 pay-and-display machines, I just lost my report, but I'm familiar with it, was, or is that, once these 13 pay-and-display machines are purchased, whether that's over a number of years or all at once, we will have the ability in all our lots to pay for more than two hours of free parking if necessary?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, that is correct.
Okay. That's, that's great. I'm happy to hear about that. Let me just pull my report back up. And in addition, you mentioned, Counselor Myers, there will be the ability to pay by your cell phone.
Correct.
And when is that being implemented?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, tomorrow morning, I am going to send out some emails to some suppliers around the province who have this product. We've had presentations for this type of product all throughout the winter, so we have a good working knowledge of this product, and we hope to haul this up and running as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. And there is also a recommendation to reconfigure the Bingham Lot. This is the lot behind Tim Horton's on Bay Street. When would that be implemented?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, we're planning to begin that process as soon as, basically, this meeting concludes.
And what about the reconfiguration or the addition of what is, I believe, a basketball court at the Brock Albert Lot?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, that will require additional dialogue with the Culture and Recreation Division, and they will probably drive that project. We'll make sure that that space is available for them, but I can see them driving that project. We're basically enforcement. They're going to take that, and they're going to try and do what they do best.
And obviously, it depends on people's shopping habits and what attracts them to downtown, but we had been in, and we have been in, continue to be in a deficit situation with respect to our parking operations. But what do we anticipate the deficit to either be cut to, or what do we anticipate any surplus to be?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, if we are successful with the 13 pay-and-displays, we're looking at a potential revenue of $57,000 annually, in conjunction with the one hour and five hours, that's an additional $40,000. Right now, we're operating around $110,000 deficit, so we should be fairly close within the routine of becoming self-sufficient financially, I would think. Of course, we will, that'll depend on the number of people that are downtown and the number of people that are using our parking facilities as well. Because since the, well, I've been in transit for 16 years, and in the 16 years that I've been in transit, the numbers of parking every year have just gone down. So there's less and less people parking downtown.
Okay. So I guess the hope is that there will be enough to attract folks downtown, that we will at the very least break even. And it sounds like from your suggestion or your comments, that all things being equal, we should be in a position in a couple of years to be close to break even.
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, I would think so, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Counselor Bruni? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don, since 2014 to 2016, your actual cost of operating has been reduced by about $84,000, and you mentioned the number $109,000. How did you get down to that point?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruni, that's primarily on the division not replacing retired employees. At one time, we had a supervisor and two clerks in parking, and as we speak, we have one clerk in parking. The administrative duties are handled by myself and the area coordinator for transit and parking. So we have less staffing, less benefits, less vacation. That's primarily the reason. Our other costs remain relatively consistent because they're all fixed costs. Most of them are contracted out to the private sector, snow removal, bylaw enforcement, grass cutting, pothole pavement repair, et cetera, is done on an as-per-need basis through the public works. So it's basically a reduction in staffing.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else on this matter? Seeing none, thank you for your work on this, to the staff, and also to Counselor Shoemaker and the remainder of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so we have Counselor Myers that we're at. You, right now, I understand, Counselor Myers, do you have any other matters on the consent agenda? Okay, so any other councils with matters on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call and vote on the consent agenda before they reconsider.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, resolve that all items listed under the item six, consent agenda, and the addendum be approved as recommended.
All in favor, carried. Yes, sure.
The addendum there, 6.14, are we not going to address that?
Kiwanis Community Theater Center appointment?
Are we not going to address that tonight?
I think it's made. We just made it.
Well, we were given three candidates.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Fada, in the report, it lists the, there were three applicants for the position that were considered by the Board and Committee Appointments or Nominating Committee. That committee recommended one of those candidates to you, and that's what's in the report and in the resolution.
So we don't vote? I thought we were going to vote on it, sorry.
No, we don't. We just did. You accepted the recommendation. Okay, so we're at 7.11, Mr. Clerk, I believe?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, 7.1.1, council vacancy report of myself is attached for the consideration of council. As an initial motion by Councilors Bruni and Hollingsworth, resolve that the report of the Deputy CAO City Clerk Corporate Services be received, and further that council accept the resignation of Ross Romano and declare the seat of Counselor Ward Six vacant. As the report notes, the direction of council is sought as to whether to fill the seat through a by-election or through appointment, and I have resolutions prepared for either eventuality, whichever the direction of council is.
Okay, so can we deal with this current motion, and maybe we can get this out of the way, which is to receive the clerk's report and to accept the resignation of Counselor Romano and declare the seat vacant? So that's Counselor Bruni, second by Counselor Hollingsworth. All in favor? It's carried. Okay, so now we need to give staff some direction on whether we will be having a by-election or whether we will be filling the vacancy by way of an appointment. We'll start with Counselor Rutland.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. When I first read this, I said, not terribly academic, but I don't think it's a, it's a no-brainer, I believe. I don't think we should go through the expense of holding an election, particularly since I don't think it would be held till September, so basically, not much more than one year left before we have another citywide election. And I think it's been a past practice, not very often, fortunately, but I think the appointment is the way to go, and I think trying to leave names out of the picture, it's just best that way. But the person who came third in the ward has come forward... came third in, in the ward has come forward and said he's prepared, uh, to stand and whether the difference between the third place and the fourth place and the fifth place persons, I think are irrelevant, whether it's two votes or two hundred votes, I think. And, and some people have come forward and said you should take this person from here and here right across the city. I think that would be inappropriate for Ward Six, so I would be prepared to move a resolution and I think I have a secondar in Counselor Myers that we proceed with the appointment of Ozzy Grandinetti as to fill the vacancy in Ward Six.
Okay, so that's the, um, that's second, so that's the motion before us. Uh, I guess we have debate on that motion. We, we weren't anticipating that we would be appointing somebody, uh, tonight, but, uh, there's a mover and a secondar, so we have to go through this.
Can you comment?
Sure.
Um, I think that, and I understand that and in, in the, as we were in secondar, we had a discussion on that point, Mr. Mayor. We have one more meeting, June twenty-sixth, as we are all acutely aware of, at which time, if we delayed it to that evening, then we only have one meeting in July and one meeting in August. So quite frankly, um, that's why we felt that it would be expedition to move forward this evening and then possibly be able to swear in, um, the new counselor at June twenty-sixth.
It's a pretty substantive motion though, Counselor Myers. Like, uh, uh, there's no notice of it, right? So like, we're having a substantive discussion about appointing someone to our council and to me, it feels really rash to do that tonight and especially, it, to me, this, at best, this could be a notice of motion for our next meeting.
Well, I, I don't think it's rash, Mr. Mayor. Those are your choice of words. Uh, I think it's quite a straightforward matter and, uh, that's just, we've, we've got a mover and a second on a resolution. I guess we'll leave it to council to decide.
Well, we were, what, what staff was looking for direction on really was the first issue, which is what, we haven't even decided, council hasn't decided on whether we're gonna have a by-election.
We're happy to separate them out, I believe, if that's what's required.
So, let's deal with them one at a time here. So, yeah, so, uh, can we table that motion?
Absolutely.
Because I think it's, it's a lot broader than we anticipated. So we're gonna table that motion. If we can have a motion just on the singular issue of whether we do it by appointment or by by-election, Counsel Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move the motion that we do it by appointment. I, I concur with, uh, Counsel Butland's, uh, remarks that, uh, you know, with, with barely a year left, once the by-election actually happens, at this point, it only seems to make sense to do an appointment.
Okay, so Counsel Hollingsworth seconded that. Counsel Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can, we ask the city clerk to, uh, give us a description of what that would mean. What, what's our process if we vote to go by appointment to open it up, you know, notwithstanding the fact that we have a resolution that's been suggested that we deal with, with it tonight?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Nero. What council has done in the past when they've used the appointment process to fill a council vacancy is they have allowed interested persons to put their names forward. Uh, certainly, I would wish any person that council is going to consider to at least go through the process of, uh, filling out certain forms that we will pre- prepare for that. Uh, that is because the person needs to, in writing, uh, indicate to us that they're willing to accept the appointment and there also needs to be a need for them to attest to the fact that they are eligible to hold office. It's just a part of our diligence, uh, in the process. What we have done in the past is we have brought to council, uh, a listing and the relevant forms of, uh, people who have indicated being interested in it and it, the process unfolds very similar to what you do in a committee or appointment process, appointing councillors to committees. Uh, from that pool of people, people are nom- put forth and nominated and if there's more than, uh, if the nominations are more than the number of positions available, so in this case, one, then we hold voting until one of those nominees, uh, is, uh, appointed by a majority of council.
So, Mr. Clerk, would you be able to have that process unfold by the next meeting? Is that enough time?
Yes.
Or you could do that?
Yes.
You would have a list, uh, we would advertise it, you would have a list come forward and we would do an appointment that, that evening?
We would, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Nero, we would put out a notice tomorrow and have the relevant forms available on our website. Uh, we would choose a closing date of likely next Monday and that, uh, gives us enough time to prepare a report for the agenda for the June twenty-sixth meeting.
Thank you for that and just in, as far as process, do we have a motion on the floor to?
We're dealing, we're, right now, we're dealing with the motion about that Counsel Shoemaker moved and Counsel Hollingsworth seconded to go by way of appointment. That's all we're dealing with.
And then we'll decide how we're gonna do that?
We'll, we'll come back to the second part of that motion after, which is, we have Counsel Butland and Counsel Myers wanting to move a specific party. We'll deal with that after we deal with this motion.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Karpadich?
Yeah, as the remaining Ward Counselor for Six there, I certainly support the appointment process and of course, the tax savings to, uh, our municipal rate payers, but, uh, I would certainly like to see, uh, you know, if, uh, other people were interested in putting their name forward and nominated, I'd like to see that and then go through the process and see what shakes out of it from there. So that's where, I, I certainly would support Shoemaker's, uh, res- resolution, but also have the process where people are able to apply for the vacancy.
So can we have a, a vote on Counsel Shoemaker's resolution? I think, it seems to me there's consensus that appointment is, is the most appropriate thing to do in this circumstance. Counsel Turco, sorry.
Can I say opposing comment?
To Counsel Shoemaker's resolution? So you want to have a by-election?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. You can speak against it if you like.
Uh, being consistent, uh, my way of thinking when we, I've, I've been part of, uh, some other councillors in this room since two thousand. Uh, I think we had, uh, it looks like six times we had to think about this. Uh, the first one, a little history, Mr. Mayor, for some of the folks here that, uh, weren't around. Some of you might recall, uh, the late Tom Austin in Ward Six that passed away and, uh, only two of us voted against, uh, appointment. That was the late Counsel Manzanac and we gave our reasons why back then. Uh, the other one was Derek, Counsel Derek Brant, you might remember, that had to move, uh, to another job in the city. And, and we, um, I'm not sure what happened here. David Arizetti, uh, the MPP, Brian Hayes, uh, and Terry Sheehan, of course, recently and, uh, Mr. Ross Romano right now. And we just had a by-election, uh, recently. Uh, Counselor, uh, Hollingsworth was elected by a by-election. So I appreciate what everybody's saying about the, the cost of money and I said this, uh, on several occasions, what is the price of democracy? I think we owe it to the people to, I, I noticed already, we're starting to think how we're gonna get people to, uh, submit their, their intention. With all due respect to my esteemed colleague there, Counsel Butland, uh, he has a suggestion who should be the, uh, I think we have to leave it up to the people. There's another opportunity where, I agree with you too, Mr. Mayor, but, um, uh, what was the word you used? Not rush or?
Rash.
Rash? Why are we making this, this is, this is, we're electing an offi- you know, we're appointing or electing an official to sit in one of our seats here. So why, what's the rush? I think we have to, we still have, it's a year and a half, even though you might, you know, comes from, uh, Myers, you said it's gonna be in September or whatever, but it, but it's still a year and a half. If it was ninety days, I would vote for an appointment. But this is a year and a half, so, uh, I, I would support the, uh, the by-election.
I think Brian Hayes was appointed. I don't think there was a by-election there. I think he was appointed.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, we have Counsel Shoemaker's motion, seconded by Counsel Hollingsworth to fill the vacancy by way of appointment. All in favor? Opposed? That motion's carried. So we have the secondary issue. Counsel Butland, Counsel Myers, do you want to move a name now or do you wanna, if you move a name, we would debate that motion. Otherwise, we would just go through the process the clerk laid out.
Clarification?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to clarification on the process. Um, appoint, so we've decided its appointment. Um, and I guess I, I just want a small rebuttal to, to Counselor Turco in that the people of Ward Six have already, um, voted and that's, as Counsel Butland said, the third candidate that, um, you know, we are proposing, the people of Ward Six have already voted. I guess I'd like to understand, what's the criteria that we could use, um, for a selection? Um, quite frankly, to become a city councillor, you're elected by the people, not by this council. When we do an appointment to a border committee, we look at CVs and we try to look for skills that can enhance that border committee. So I'm, I'm quite, um, befuddled, quite frankly, as to why we would invite ten, fifteen, twenty, whatever number may come forward, candidates, and then what criteria we would use beyond a popularity contest. That, that's my concern. In order to find out what the people of Ward Six would want, we either do a by-election or you go to the appointment of the third candidate. So I'm quite confused as to what the process would be. What criteria would you use to appoint? I'd like to understand that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Myers, that's really a question you need to ask of yourselves and council because you're the decision-making body.
Thank you.
Okay, so we, we don't currently have another motion before us. Uh, if we, so we tabled your motion. Counsel Butland, did you want to move a motion that we appoint?
I'm fully prepared to move that we appoint Ozzy Grandinetti.
Okay, so Counsel Myers, you second that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're gonna debate that motion. Counsel Karpadich spoke to this briefly. Uh, as Ward Six Counselor, we'll have Counsel Shoemaker speak to it. Put his hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it's been my intention to support Ozzy Grandinetti because he's the third-place finisher in the two thousand fourteen by-election. I'm not necessarily sure this is the process, uh, that, that I envisioned, um, but I, I guess if it's before us, I'm going to support Ozzy. If it goes to a process a couple of weeks from now, I'm going to support Ozzy. So I, I, I'm not sure I necessarily agree with this process, but I just, you know, I, I don't really wanna, uh, walk in, you know, talk and walk in circles and just ultimately support him at the next meeting. So that's my, uh, my view on it anyways.
Counsel Hollingsworth?
Thank you. To you, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, um, this gentleman, Ozzy, um, at the last election, he placed third, correct?
Yes.
And, okay, and, correct me if I'm wrong, has he held a seat before around council?
Correct.
Okay, and one last question. Uh, how long was his term when he held a council?
I think there were-
One term?
I think Mr. Grandinetti had sat for one term. I think he ran again and was not successful and then tried again and was not successful.
Okay, and last point, um, I, at this time, would support this gentleman because I believe it's the voice of Ward Six that have clearly said in the past that he would be the best candidate at this time. Thank you.
Any other comment on the matter? Counsel Fatah?
No, I'm, I'm not gonna be, be critical of the mind of thinking here, but as I recall, when we, when Terry Sheehan stepped down, the people, the candidates that came in third and fourth, we later found out didn't qualify. So that option wasn't even available to us. Right now, we're sitting here, we're assuming, and I, and I'm probably safe to saying that, that he does qualify in terms of the cri- the criteria as far as the financial statements and so forth, which the candidates in Ward Two did not complete in time. Are, are we assuming, of course, that he's got everything lined up correctly?
We, we, we don't know.
Well, we don't because-
We're, like, we haven't received any, like, confirmation. There was a public media release from Mr. Grandinetti that said he would stand, but we're appointing someone that we haven't had any discussions with.
I, I agree.
Just conferred with my mover here. Um, we are quite happy to amend the resolution to say, based upon the clerk confirming the eligibility of the candidate. If, if there's a question around council whether this man is no longer over eighteen or no longer owns property or resides in the city, if that needs to be confirmed, those are the two qualifications to be a city councillor.
Yeah. Counsel Karpadich?
So how many individuals have put their name forward other than just Ozzy Grandinetti?
It hasn't been advertised yet. We, we literally just declared the seat vacant.
But in terms of democracy, right? I mean, if we just go ahead and select one and there's others that have their names out there, I mean, that, in my opinion, that would be inappropriate for them. So how can you pick one when others may have their names out there already and we would, uh, have to choose one over the other one? You know, and now I'm starting to go backwards now and thinking about a by-election with, uh, Counselor Turco, uh, mentioned right off the bat.
Counsel, listen, uh, let, let me share my thoughts on this and then you'll ultimately have to make a decision now because the motion's been moved. So I, I don't think this is the appropriate way to go about this personally and I have no issue with Ozzy Grandinetti. I think he's a good man. I have a good relationship with Ozzy. Um, and if Ozzy was ultimately the person that was sitting here, I'd be happy to have him and happy to work with him. So it, it has nothing to do with Ozzy at all. I, I think that it's a bit, uh, we have to be a bit careful about saying, well, he came third. I mean, he, he didn't come third by any statistically significant margin. He came third by twelve votes. So what we're saying is our twelve votes shouldn't be kind of considered, but those twelve votes, you know, are what should take the day. And I don't know how, frankly, when there's such a statistically close, there isn't, you have to go to a hundredth of a percentage point to get the difference between him and Wanda McQueen. So then on what basis are you choosing him over Wanda McQueen? You're choosing him over Wanda McQueen because there's twelve votes. We're twelve votes. And to me, we've just declared it vacant. Council has had a policy and procedure in the past. I wasn't here, but you went through a process and you appointed Brian Hayes. To me, we should follow a process and we should have a discussion and when we're having that discussion, as Counsel Shoemaker points out, if, if the argument that prevails at that time is this person came third and is the best candidate, all things considered, then that's the person who's appointed and it could very well be that I would support Mr. Grandinetti's appointment. Um, but I wouldn't support moving forward today on the basis of moving forward. And I think that we should advertise the position. I think we should invite people from our community to, uh, to apply. I think we should have a thorough discussion about it. We make all kinds of decisions every council meeting where the, the twelve of us have to come together and exercise our best collective judgment and come to a result. I don't think that this is any different than any of those other decisions and frankly, uh, I'm of the, the mind to, uh, support the Ward Six councillor's kind of opinion on this and, and I think we should go through a process. So for that reason, I'll vote against, uh, Counsel Myers and Counsel Butland's motion, but I don't want Mr. Grandinetti to think that that would be me voting against him being here in two weeks. Like Counsel Shoemaker said, I might draw the conclusion that that's persuasive and I would vote for him, but on, on the basis of the information we have before us today, on the basis on him essentially just sending out a press release, I don't know how we just then automatically appoint someone in a city council like that. Counsel Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Voting again.
Yeah, the clerk said he's got a procedural concern here, so I'm just gonna, I don't know what it is yet because he just-
My, my question is on procedure. If we vote against this resolution, does it automatically put us into that?
Through you, uh, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Nero. I've been having, uh, some discussions with, uh, Legal on just how we're proceeding. Uh, on one point, I'm very uncomfortable with proceeding with an appointment tonight. I do not have specifically in writing to me an attestation by Mr. Grandinetti that he is at this time eligible to hold office. Uh, there are a number of criteria that, uh, and certainly I, I have no reason to doubt that he is eligible to hold office, but I don't have a declaration from him that says that. I also do not have something officially from him in writing to the city clerk that he will accept the office, writing. I have a copy of a press release that was emailed to me and, uh, I have concerns with the sufficiency of that if challenged. Uh, so on, on that, uh, point, I, I have a concern about proceeding that way tonight. There, excuse me, uh, to your point of what would happen if this motion was defeated tonight and, uh, we, how would that affect the process moving forward? I do also have a bit of a concern that I've discussed with Legal as to how that sets things up in two weeks for that particular-
Candidate.
-perspective candidate. prospective candidate. With that in mind, I would suggest to council that you put this on as a notice of motion. You clearly indicate your intent that way by providing it as a notice of motion, but you don't preclude what happens on June 26.
Can I finish? Well, can I finish on my train?
Go ahead.
So, so just if we follow that, we're putting this off until next meeting, but how do we get to, get to what some of us may want to do tonight, is open this up?
It's going to be opened as a result of the first resolution. We go by appointment. Barring this resolution, the clerk is going to follow the regular process.
Okay.
So if this resolution fails, or is withdrawn, the clerk goes tomorrow and starts the regular process.
Okay, that's where I need to be clear.
Yeah. Yes, councillor Butland.
Given the discussion, I hear other people's issues and concerns and procedure, we're prepared to withdraw the resolution.
Okay. So this matter's settled. Councillor Shoemaker? Sorry, councillor Shoemaker, I need to go to councillor...
Yeah, that's fine.
And go through the steps regarding, if there was an election, and how would you go about doing it, and what's the timeframe of this election?
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
By by-election, sure.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruni. If we were to go with a by-election process, we would need to prepare a bylaw calling the by-election and bring it to you within a 60-day period after today. We would obviously try and expedite that process, as we did with the previous by-election. Without putting too fine a point on it, I would likely recommend to council a by-election that would have a voting date early in September. That's about as quickly as I could possibly do it. But we would look at having a voting day sometime in that first two weeks in September.
So you're looking at July, okay, July.
We're already through this, though, right, councillor Bruni? Like, we've already declared to go by appointment.
Well, you just withdrew.
No. There was a motion passed to do it by appointment.
Yeah, okay.
Councillor Shoemaker?
I'm sorry about that.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just for, if we go by appointment, and I think I understood councillor Myers' concern to be, if we go by appointment, it'll put off till the July meeting, the actual taking of office, is there a way that we could start the meeting, next meeting, with an appointment, and have the councillor take office, whoever is appointed?
You'd have to have them all here.
Yeah, I suppose so, yeah.
But we're really, we're really talking about, like, the last meeting in June and the first meeting in July. I mean, you're talking about...
There's only one in July, though.
Yeah, but there's, yeah, but you're talking about one meeting. You're literally, the difference is one meeting.
It's a month, it's a month, or six weeks from now.
Well, six weeks from now, but the last meeting in June, and the one meeting in July isn't six weeks apart, right? So you're missing, you'd have your councillor miss one meeting. And frankly, we had both these councillors miss meetings more than one meeting. Yeah, councillor Hollingsworth?
Through you, mayor, to city clerk. You outlined the criteria for an individual to put his or her name forward. For example, I believe you said the person has to be 18 or older, as an example? And, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. There are a number of eligibility requirements, which would be spelled out in what I would put forward as a form for them to declare. It's very, it will be extremely similar in content to the declaration all of you had to declare to, in order to become candidates in the elections that you were elected with.
Here's my question. When you post this, whenever it happens, I guess my concern is that there's going to be some really viable, valued candidates with some excellent life experiences. How are we, as a council, going to get to know these potential individuals, and how are we going to make sure we make the right decision?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. It's very similar to the answer provided councillor Myers. That's entirely up to you, as members of council, to do your research and determine that.
Well, you're going to get the information that they submit to the clerk's office.
So is there a way that we can encourage on the website, when people are thinking, applying, to give examples of what they've done for the community, as an example, or some of their background?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. We can certainly, aside from the required forms that they will need to complete, we can encourage them to attach any information that they feel council should consider in considering them as applicants. I don't want to get more formal than that. I'm worried about the legal constraints.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So that matter's decided now. If there are no other questions or comments, we'll move on to section eight.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under section eight, 8.1, a motion by councillor Shoemaker and Bruni. Whereas Ross Romano was elected as the city's member of provincial parliament on June 1st, 2017, and whereas Ross Romano has served as the Ward 6, Sault Ste. Marie city councillor since 2014, excuse me, and whereas Ross Romano is the first progressive conservative elected provincially in Sault Ste. Marie since 1981, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Sault Ste. Marie expressed to Ross Romano their immense gratitude for his commitment to council over the course of his term, and wish him all the best in his service to our community and the province as our member of provincial parliament.
Councillor Shoemaker, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, we had councillor Romano here earlier, and I know that we're all sad to see him go, and wish him well in his new role. I know that he will serve vigorously, as he served on council. And, you know, for the sake of our community, we hope he is extremely successful, but we know that he has shown he will put the hard work in to ensure he is successful, so wishing him all the best.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Shoemaker, for that motion. Mr. Clerk?
You just need to vote.
All in favor? I apologize. Carry. I assume that councillor Nero agrees, too. You didn't vote. I just voted for you. Go ahead.
Under agenda item 8.2, charging for civic center parking, a motion by councillor Shoemaker and Fata. Whereas the Parking Review Committee has studied downtown parking and recommended changes to modernize our downtown parking system, and whereas during the community input portion of their investigations, the Parking Review Committee received significant feedback from residents, and whereas many residents noted that Alcoma University, Sioux College, the Sioux Area Hospital, Ontario Lottery and Gaming, Group Health Center, and many other entities within the city charge employees for parking, and whereas the city must collect revenue wherever possible to offset tax increases, now therefore be it resolved that staff bring forward to city council a proposal to charge municipal employees for parking at all city-owned buildings, including the Civic Center.
So councillor Shoemaker, before you get into this, if you could, in your comments, discuss kind of the point of asking staff to bring forward a proposal, as opposed to a report, because that was the only part of this motion that I kind of got lost in.
So I guess my intention for them bringing us a proposal is to see what the proposal, in terms of what the fee structure should be, rather than a report, should we do it, should we not do it? I think we have to decide, as a council, are we going to do it, are we not going to do it? And if we decide we're going to do it, we want a suggestion from staff on how to structure the actual fee schedule, if I can put it that way. So that is, in terms of a proposal, what I meant by this. Because I think it is, it would be difficult for city staff to bring back a report, which they are sort of directly affected by. Not that I would suggest they would do an improper job of it, I just think we have to decide, we're going to do this, or we're not going to do this. So that's why the choice of the proposal in that, in that section of the resolution. Okay. So I put this together after, you know, it was a year and a half or so that we had a Parking Review Committee struck that looked at downtown parking, and one of the comments we got consistently was, well, if you're looking at charging for parking, you have to look internally, and you're not currently charging for parking at your own municipal building. So that is the Civic Center, but I think, you know, our Civic Center is downtown, and we're reviewing downtown parking, but it, we can't charge for parking just for those who work in the Civic Center if we're going to charge for parking. There's folks at Civic Center, there's folks at Brock and Albert, there's folks at the Transit Garage at Huron Street, there's folks at Sackville, there's folks at the arenas, and I'm sure I'm missing some others. But anyways, we have a number of buildings.
So this would encapsulate, like, the John Road, so you'd have an employee at the John Road?
All city-owned buildings, absolutely, yep. And only for employees, not for the public. I think that the Bondar Building is a perfect example of a building that charges for parking for their employees, but not for the public. If you're the public, you go into their cul-de-sac, and you don't have to pay for parking. The government, you know, some people will say, well, these are public buildings, they should be accessible to everybody, and you shouldn't have to charge for parking. Well, you know, the trend is that that's not the case. The courthouse is a public building, owned by the public, and yet you have to pay $3 or $2 to go into the courthouse. The, same with the Service Ontario Building at, right beside the courthouse. Same with the Ontario Lottery and Gaming Building, frankly, it is a public building, and staff there have to pay, as I understand, somewhere in the range of $250, $260 a year for parking. The hospital, as councillor Hollingsworth properly notes, you have to pay for building there with, or, sorry, you have to pay for parking there, whether you are a employee, patient, visitor, no matter who. So I think this is, in fact, more restrictive than, or perhaps more liberal, I guess, in that sense, in that we aren't charging the public for parking for our city-owned buildings. So I think it is, you know, Sioux College, I think their parking fees are somewhere in the range of $200 a year. Alcoma University, I know when I was a student there, it was somewhere in the range of $200 a year, slightly less. So, you know, it's just, I think, a tool that we are not using. We have to maintain our lots, that's being done by the general tax base, and, you know, I'm not looking to make millions off this. All I want to do is help offset some of the maintenance costs. There's lighting, there's snow plowing, there's painting the lines every year, there's sealing the cracks, there's asphalt patching. Parking lots are expensive things to have, and charging the user for it, in this case the user is our employee, but that seems to be the way the provincial and federal governments are going. I mean, even at the federal building at 22 Bay Street, there's paid park in there, so I, you know, I think that this is, it goes hand in hand with our Parking Review Committee. It stems from that Parking Review Committee, from lots of the feedback that we receive there. And when you look at it, you know, it really is an unfair system that we've got now, where other levels of government are having their employees pay, and yet our municipal government employees are having the general tax base subsidize the parking lot. So I'm trying to fix that injustice.
So we have councillor Bruni?
I guess, is it possible to direct him to councillor Shoemaker, because he has the resolution on the floor?
Sure.
Just for clarification?
If you want clarity in the resolution, absolutely, that's appropriate.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you. First of all, obviously councillors will have to pay also, because we're civil employees. Thank you. Do you think, are you looking for a revenue on this resolution, or basically to cover the costs?
I want it to be reasonable, so I, you know, I don't want to make money if that means, you know, if we're, if 200 bucks a year, for example, makes us money, I don't want to do that. But if it's 500 bucks, I don't want employ, you know, if the break-even point is 500 or 600 bucks a year, I think we still need to subsidize it, because we can't be charging our employees more than, you know, they can, they can afford to manage. But I think we need to find a reasonable rate and charge it, and if the break-even point is lower than that, well, we should just charge the break-even point. But if the break-even point is higher than that, we shouldn't go all the way to the break-even point.
I'm just worried regarding the subsidy, taxpayers will be subsidized for the parking, and I'm concerned with that. And just, Matt, regarding your $200, I don't think you can get a parking spot here for $200 a year. I know where I work, it's over $500, so I'm worried that the cost will be high. But if we have to subsidize somehow, we'll have to take a look at that. So visitors at the Civic Center do not have to pay, or visitors at any other municipal property will not pay for parking, strictly?
That's how, that's how I structured it, not to have visitors pay.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, through you, to Mr. Girardi, would he be able to provide us a cost on maintaining the parking lots that we own for the next report?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruni. I'm sure through the Parking Authority, you might get ideas through them what the costs are, because they're running the parking lots. I don't do...
Oh, you don't do?
No, that would be through Tom Verre. I'll refer that question to Tom.
Thank you. Mr. Verre?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruni. Those are costs we would have to look into, I'm sure we could find them to include in a report.
Okay. That's it for now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, so we actually have a list here, so we're going councillor Hoopanen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a difficult, I'm having a difficult time trying to decide when I don't know what the dollar amounts are. I just, I think I need more information before, I mean, I agree with everything that councillor Shoemaker is saying, and I think the idea is good, but to just vote, let's do it, without knowing, is not really working well for me, so I'm not sure if I'm going to support that.
Councillor Myers?
So are we doing comments, I guess?
May as well.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I found that this was one of the issues that, I certainly understand how the resolution came about in response to the suggestion raised through the downtown parking. And I also understand, on the surface, that it may appear to be a great idea and easy cash, as council continues to press our staff to find sources of cost recovery, and it may appear to be quite straightforward. Municipal employees pay to park at the municipal site where they work. The citing of other places is problematic for me. The examples of hospital, college, Alcoma U, et cetera, they're flawed examples by comparison, because everyone pays. Everybody pays, not just the employees. You go to the hospital, and we well know, I was on the board, I fought parking, being paid, when I was on their board. Everybody pays. Everybody pays at the university, everybody pays at the college. All taxpayers of Sault Ste. Marie are the ones who are now paying for the parking lots. And that means every single person in this room, including the employees. It's the taxpayers of Sault Ste. Marie who are paying for the parking lots. They're funded. The difference with something like the hospital, and again, I was on the board at the time, the province said, "We will not fund parking." The province has said that to the university, the college, Bondar Place. The province and the feds have said, "We won't pay for your parking." But for the city of Sault Ste. Marie and all of our municipal buildings, and we're talking about the cemetery, there's a building there, there's a greenhouse at Green, at Bellevue Park, where we have staff that work, every single place that is across this city, which is multiple sites, they're already paid for by the taxpayers. The funder is the very people that you want to pay again. So, I mean, in my view, we pay through our tax dollars, and we need to remember that that includes the city employees. So if municipal parking lots are to convert to paid parking, the only fair approach is everyone pays. That's ludicrous. That is absolutely ludicrous. Come on down, pay your tax bill, and pay to pay your tax bill. Pay to park while you pay your tax bill. So obviously, that's not, that's not the route to go. So I thought, you know what, I'm going to ask the people of Ward 2, on behalf of my ward mate and myself, I have a list built up of over 300 in my time on council, so I sent out an email. I only sent it out at 10 o'clock this morning, I got 57 responses. They were still coming in at the beginning of the meeting here. Out of 57 responses, eight people felt that everyone should pay. Nine people felt that only the city staff should pay. Forty-seven people felt no one should pay. So I am totally opposed to this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councillor Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Prior to councillor Myers' comments, um, I was just going to say that I'm a little reluctant to support the resolution. However, um, it's an issue that's come up in the community, um, and it is a report, or a...
Well, it's, it's actually not, councillor Christian, which is a bit of a...
Right, right.
Which is a bit of the challenge, if, if, I think if it was a report to come back to us, my sense is, I think it would, would pass, um, but it's not. So in the way councillor Shoemaker structured the resolution, by supporting the resolution, you're agreeing staff are going to pay, which I think to councillor Hoopanen's point's a bit of a, a bit of a challenge, right? Just to give you a hypothetical, councillor Shoemaker, if, if I'm an eighteen-year-old lifeguard at the John Rhodes, it's going to be hard to monitor that. Like, that's like, the staff aren't going to be able to make sure that that person pays, and you might not want him to, because he's a, or she's a student, they're just going to go park in all the other free parking spots, right? So, when, when I originally kind of understood this was coming forward, I understood it to be staff at the civic centre, which I think is a lot more analogous to the argument that all of the other people who park down here, like councillor Bruny, you know, pay for their, for their parking. So I, I think that's, if you do support it, it is supporting that all staff will pay for parking no matter where they are.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with that, and I understand, uh, I, I agree with you, I'd have much easier time of it if it was a report and it dealt with the civic centre, because that, that's cleaner. The other issue I, and this is a question, is, uh, I'm no labor expert, but, uh, if we tried to implement something like this, would that not have to go through labor negotiation as part, as a condition of employment? And would that, how, how would we deal with that? I don't know who to ask, is Mr. Murrell here?
I don't know what the answer to that question is. Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Christian, we would have to bring that information back to you. Uh, if the motion passes, it'll be information provided as part of the proposal.
Yeah, yeah, I'm struggling with the, the proposal. I, I, there's so many issues around this, um, this topic, that to me, it makes sense to make it a report, and so that we can identify all the issues that we need to identify in order to make a decision, rather than, uh...
So councillor Christian, I, I'm going to ask councillor Shoemaker, can we change the word "proposal" to "report"? Is that a friendly amendment? And we can bring?
Yeah.
Staff can then bring a report back, so the, and the report is to charge on parking, that's not the actual decision to tell them to charge on parking, that will be made at the next meeting predicated upon the report. Is that friendly, councillor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councillor, councillor Fata?
Yep.
Okay, so that, this changes it, now we're asking staff to bring a report back, and that report will have in it all the information that we need to make it, you know, an educated decision, including labor relations issues.
Okay. Notwithstanding everything that councillor Myers says, and I appreciate what she's saying, I still think it's our responsibility as councillors to at least hear the, the issues behind a report and what we'd have to deal with. I don't know that I would support it in the, in the end, but, uh, assuming my responsibility as a councillor, I think I need to hear the report and the issues surrounding this topic, so I would, I would support it on, on those grounds.
Okay. Councillor Turco?
Uh, I think, Mr. Mayor, that everything's been discussed, but I do want a clarification on, uh, one of the questions I have for councillor Shoemaker. Um, I think, in your report, you say, "The city must to collect revenue," one of your reasons is why you're bringing this forward, "The city must collect revenue wherever possible to offset tax increases." And then in the other breath, we're also saying, "If you've had complaints, or, we've had complaints because..." The other report we had earlier about the municipal, uh, paid parking, as the committee discussed. So which one is it? Are we here to, are they both, uh...
Well, the, the report on municipal downtown parking was, uh, the committee was struck as a way of offsetting the deficit that the, uh, parking operations downtown incur for us every year, and this is to offset the cost of these parking lots, which could result in lesser tax increases, I suppose, in the future, so they both achieve the same result, in my view.
Okay, I just want a clarification on that, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. We have councillor Kupodich?
So we're, we're clear now, is this going to be a report that's going to be coming forward?
That's right.
And so the resolution itself is going to, they're looking at, uh, well, the resolution looking at actually charging municipal staff who provide a service for the city, a parking, a parking cost?
That's right.
And so, I think councillor Myers identified some of the things that could go wrong with it, but in the report, why don't we identify the, uh, organizations in town, the companies in towns that don't, uh, that don't have to pay for parking, like Algoa Steel, Denares, there's several other ones around? Why don't we, why don't we identify them in the report as well, just not the ones that, uh, have been identified that have to pay for parking?
Well, the sta, the staff will, will draft the report as the staff determines appropriate, councillor Kupodich. I mean, you can make those arguments, uh, when the report comes back.
Hmm, okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, councillor Hollingsworth, uh, you've already spoken to this, but if you could, if your comments brief them, we're going to call a vote. Oh, sorry, I thought, I thought, I apologize, go ahead.
Get me excited there, hmm. Um, just a couple of questions and comments, but, um, I think everyone around this table has brought up some excellent points, um, and I just want to say, councillor Kupodich, I, I really believe in what you just said. Let's also emphasize those areas that do not charge for parking, such as Algoa Steel, which is a large employee base. And I also want to emphasize, um, let's compare apples to apples, and councillor Myers, thank you for reminding us that the Sioux Area Hospital was mandated by the province that, um, people will be charged, but I also want to emphasize that everyone should be paying, and not just staff. Um, I think that's also important. I want to bring to your attention a few things. Um, one of the well-known human resource companies in Canada did a survey, and the human resource company that offers consultations around our country is Mackenzie and Company, and they have highlighted that the trend, uh, with its staff or employees is to offer non-financial or incentive benefits, because the trend in companies is going towards offering non-financial incentives to help manage costs. This, offering staff parking, is a good example as a non-incentive or non-financial incentive. That's the trend that human resources are going towards, and that's the trend that business schools are promoting, not the opposite way. So, therefore, I think as we move forward in debating this, let's look at where the true trends are, and let's really understand what we're trying to say to our staff, our employees, when we want to create a positive culture. When it comes down to finances, yes, there's ways to offset our costs, but is this really going to be the way we want to go? Thank you.
Thank you, so councillor Fata?
So, a quick comment, if I may. Uh, reference was made to the, um, to the building at the corner of Albert and, and, uh, sorry, Wellington and Brock. My, the employer that I used to work for was the previous tenant in that location, and, uh, over thirty years ago, they introduced, um, paid parking, and, uh, back then it was about thirty bucks a month, which I thought was quite a high, but what happened there was that, um, one of our employees, fellow employees, decided to grieve it. And the reason why he grieved it back then, and was successful, by the way, was that the, um, the parking there, you didn't have an assigned parking spot in, in that location. So what happened was, the church, funeral home across the street, and, uh, the apartment building next door, they would just randomly park there. So when we, the argument was made that you don't have an assigned spot. That garnered some, um, some, uh, you know, ultimate thinking, and as a result, uh, we were, uh, we discontinued having to pay that, uh, that monthly parking. So, again, my, my thinking along these lines was more of, of an area that, that, where you can be, uh, have a gate that allows it, only the people that have access to that parking lot would be, uh, able to park there. But if you have an area like the Sackville location, you can start putting up gates everywhere, I, I think it's not practical. So, if we start talking about doing this in every possible public loc, uh, property, it, it's going to be, uh, a little bit awkward that, uh, we're going to start putting gates up everywhere, so that anybody that has that card can get in there and find his parking spot. And otherwise, it would be very difficult to, to control. Thank you.
Okay. Are you asking to speak to this, councillor Breton, or are you going to call the motion?
I'll speak to it.
Okay.
Very briefly, although I'm very reluctant. Uh, um, I indicated to councillor Shoemaker that I would support this, I'm much more comfortable and with councillor Christian's rationale, for saying, "I wanted to come back." The way the original resolution was, it was more like a fait accompli. I'd like to see a cross-section across the city, but just to say, "No, I'm not interested at all," I didn't have a good rationale for saying, "No, I'm not interested," as I often am against councillor Shoemaker's resolutions. But on this one, I think we do owe it to the public, let's take a look. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so councillor Shoemaker's requested recorded vote, Mr. Clerk?
Recorded vote has been requested. Councillor Butland?
Councillor Butland?
I'm sorry. You're four.
A recorded vote has been requested.
I'm four, I'm sorry.
Councillor Myers?
Against.
Councillor Bruny?
Four to four a report.
That, that's what the motion is.
Four. Councillor Nero?
Four.
Councillor Shoemaker?
Four.
Councillor Hollingsworth?
Against.
Councillor Hoopanen?
I'm not sure if I am...
It's, it's for a report, councillor Hoopanen, it's not to implement it, it's for a report. Inconsistent with, it's consistent with your original comments.
Okay, yep, then I'm four, that's, that's my thought, thank you.
Councillor Kupodich?
Against.
Councillor Christian?
Four.
Councillor Fata?
Four.
Councillor Turco?
Against.
Mayor Provenzano?
Four.
Motion carries. Eight to four.
Eight to four.
Four. Uh, council, eight point three has been dealt with. Motion, item eight point four, Fire Services Reserve List. Motion by councillors Christian and Bruny, whereas Sioux St. Marie Fire Services routinely maintained an active reserve list of qualified candidates to fill vacant positions within the department, and whereas the department recently eliminated the active reserve list, and whereas the current makeup and demographic profile of the department indicates that there will likely be more retirements within the next few years, and whereas it may be prudent for the city to re-establish a reserve list of qualified candidates to fill the anticipated openings, and whereas the establishment of such a list will make the process of filling these positions more efficient and timely, now therefore be it resolved that council ask appropriate city staff to report on the feasibility of re-establishing a qualified reserve list to meet the anticipated needs within fire services, and to identify measures that will ensure that any potential list and its implementation will be fair and equitable to all potential candidates.
Councillor Christian?
Mr. Mayor, um, first of all, I want to say that, uh, I see nothing wrong with doing our best to hire local talent, uh, especially in fire services, notwithstanding the, uh, realignment that we did, um, recently. Uh, we are going to need, uh, new fire personnel i- in the future, and I would prefer to pull from, uh, local talent, not, not that the entire list would be local, uh, but clearly the majority of them would be local. Um, I do have to say that, uh, although it was, uh, within the, uh, prior chief's, uh, mandate, I, I did not agree with abolishing that list. Uh, there was, that's just my opinion, and, uh, I don't, don't really want to debate it, but I think for the record, I need to say that. Uh, I don't think that those young men did anything, uh, they, they acted in good faith, um, and they were qualified, so I'm hoping that we could re-establish a list, um, obviously as fire candidates, firefighter candidates, they're going to have their qualifications. Uh, and I do want to, uh, emphasize that if we could do something like this, that any future list, potential list, would be managed in a way that it doesn't turn into an exercise in nepotism, that in fact, uh, we're drawing on our local talent, uh, qualified people, and that we select from that list that way. But I do think that we should have a local list. There's enough talent in Sioux St. Marie, enough people that have applied to be, uh, fire personnel that could, could certainly meet our needs, and also help them as well. We need to look after our, our youth, too. Thank you.
The CEO is putting up his, uh, indicating he has something to say here.
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Christian, and to, uh, council at large. Uh, it might be helpful this evening, in terms of the motion that's before you, to give a description, we are looking at re-establishing a list already, and we've already been doing some work be, uh, towards that. I wouldn't say it's a local list, but it would be a list that's there, set up to be fair, equitable, transparent, and would give con, fair consideration to the qualifications of all potential candidates. Uh, acting chief, Paul Malosovich, is here, he could speak to you in terms of some of the, uh, details of what that would look like. What we've been doing is, we just want to wait till the new chief would be coming on board, to be able to take a look at, uh, that, that new program, or that reinstatement of the program on a slightly tweaked basis, uh, wait for that fire chief to come on board, the new one, to say, "Yes, and this, this is how we're going to proceed." It, it is accurate that we are going to be having vacancies that will be coming up, and so we were in anticipation, because it's not something you can do overnight in terms of replacing fire, fires. So maybe I'll turn it to acting, uh, chief, Paul Malosovich, to just give a flavor of what we're, what we're looking at, and what it looks like in terms of a model that would be done.
Yeah, for sure. Uh, you know, we'd be looking at a model that we used in the past, um, you know, we would obviously tweak it to, to make sure that it's current, uh, add anything that we have to, that we learned, uh, historically. Uh, historically, what we used to do was, we, we ran a recruitment, there was aptitude testing, there's physical testing, physical demands analysis, that sort of thing, and, uh, we picked a number of, uh, successful candidates that were in reserve. As openings became available, we, that person was drawn in. So we'd be looking at, going back to the, basically that model on a merit-based system.
So we have, yeah, I have councillor Bruny in the next on the list, and then councillor Shoemaker, you and councillor Christian?
I, just a follow-up question, but you can go.
Well, let's get done with you, and then we'll go to councillor Bruny.
Okay. Um, so, how, how, can you speak to how this proposed reserve list differs from what we were, what we're currently doing?
Through you, Mayor, to councillor Christian, what we're currently doing i- is we don't have a list.
Right.
So we're, you know, short of saying we're not doing anything, I, I don't want to say that, but, uh, what I think you're referring to is the fact that we're potentially going to be drawing on the CTS process?
Yes.
Is that, we, okay. So that, that's basically, uh, it's a provincial-wide standardized testing facility, it's, it's essentially run by the Ontario Association of Fire Chiefs, and it's exactly that, it's a standardized process by which anybody could apply. If they meet the criteria, they get a certificate, and by that certificate, it's, it's very similar to what we'd be running internally, uh, in terms of physical testing, physicals, all those sort of things. So they would have that certificate, by that, we would put an ad in the paper, say we're running a recruitment, and these people would have that baseline certificate.
So, uh, hmm, so if, if we, if we go to this new old model, uh, what are the advantages beyond what I've spoken about in terms of having more of a local slant to? What, what would be some of the advantages to the department? Are there any advantages to the department?
Uh, through you, Mayor, to councillor Christian, I, I don't know advantages of one model over another, because the, the, the model would be the same in terms of local flavor. Uh, unless, if the, if the local, uh, folks wanted to apply, that have the criteria, that have the want to get in the fire service, if they have taken this and have this, uh, certificate, they could certainly apply. I think it's a question of whether, how many of the locals are going to have that certificate, because the baseline testing is done in southern Ontario, and I think that's the flaw in the system.
In, in the system that currently exists, or the one we want?
Using, using the, uh, Ontario Fire Administration system.
Right, right. So if, if you're, you're, you're anticipating, can I say, ask this question, if we go to this new, uh, system, the one we sort of used before? There would likely be, uh, a more of a, um, local component, and more local candidates being considered?
Yes, through you, Mayor, to councillor Christian, yes, I would agree with that.
Thank you.
Okay, so councillor Bruny?
To Paul or to the CAO, what about the names on the previous list? Are those names going to be transferred on to the new list, or you're starting from scratch? Basically?
Through you, Mayor, to councillor Bruny, uh, the, uh, my opinion is, at this point, they would be scratched, that, that list was from two thousand and eleven, if we looked historically at what we had done... If we looked historically at what we had done prior to that list, the list generally only asked, lasted a certain number of years, so we always went back to a retesting system. I think it, I stand to be corrected, the one before that may have been open-ended, but before that, they were generally every two years. So, if the person wasn't selected within that two years, we ran another recruitment, and oftentimes, and there's, there's fellows that I work with right now that ended up on the list multiple times before they got in.
Okay. Case Counsel Schumaker?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I feel like this might not be the consensus opinion, but I, my sense is that if we pass this, we are handicapping the next chief. I, I get that, you know, this process is undergoing a review with the intent of the next chief implementing it, but my view is that we should let the next chief decide whether or not he wants to even look at a list, whether he wants to go with the current system. We shouldn't be developing a list system if that's not the way the current chief, or the, sorry, the next chief wants to go. So, I, I think that this is somewhat premature. I think it's an administrative decision. I think it, I realize it's asking for a report, but I do think that it puts the next chief in an awkward position. If that report comes back and he says, or she says, that he or she does not wanna go with a list system, it immediately starts off that chief's term on a bad footing with the, with the wreck and file at the fire department. So, I will not support this, and I think it's, it's actually a bad move. I think it's a bad move.
The CEO, I'll speak to your comments at the end here. Counsel Schumaker, the CEO, it looks like he has a comment to make.
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Schumaker. We were working with it administratively. When we indicated that we're looking at that model, we were looking at that model, we're looking at the CTS model, we're looking at all of them, to be able to have a package available for when the chief comes on board, to be able to say, "He or she," that that's where they want to go. So, we were keeping it within administration, but the motion is here, so we're just responding now in terms of what, what would be coming back or could be coming back in terms of that motion.
Counsel Kompadich?
So, we just had a presentation by Peter Worian, and he went over about the significance of training and how critical it was, and now we got a resolution in front of us that talks about succession planning. And really, that's what we're doing here, is we're succession planning and possibly with our own municipal youth. So, I support the resolution. It makes absolute sense.
Okay. So, we're gonna, before your rebuttal, Counsel Christian, because I, my comments are probably pretty consistent with Counsel Schumaker, so I'll give you the chance to rebut those also. You know, frankly, when I read the motion at a gender review, I thought this was the type of motion that I didn't particularly wanna see coming from council, because it, it really revolves around the kind of hiring processes in our department, and we use, we leave our administration and our management to determine hiring processes, just as if there's, if, if the administration and management of firing services wanna use a list, I support that. If they don't wanna use a list, I would support that, because they would be in the best position to determine how to manage that department. I happened to know at the time that the, the interim chief had raised the issue prior to this motion with the CEO, saying, "Look, we have to have some discussions in the department about hiring some firefighters, because we're gonna have some retirements, and we're gonna probably be in the near term in a position where we have to hire firefighters." But in any event, it's something that I would, generally speaking, much rather see administration deal with and address. That noted that the motion asked for a report back on the feasibility, but there were two councillors that wanted to put the motion forward, and it's on the agenda accordingly. I would share your opinion, Counsel Schumaker. I think we're really treading into the, the administration of the corporation as opposed to the governance of it. Counsel Christian?
I would, I would say that if, this would not be the first time that we tread into the operations of...
I would, I would agree with that.
So, this isn't precedent-setting in any way. With, you know, the elephant in the room is that we've had ongoing issues in the department. I would argue that the new fire chiefs got more, bigger issues to worry about than a recruitment list. The fact of the matter is that anybody that's on a list, whether it's the local recruitment list or a list that's generated in Southern Ontario, they're all qualified. We're simply saying that as a council, as civic leaders, we're asking that we, we try as best we can, without handicapping the new manager, to try to hire local. We're not asking him to hire unqualified personnel. That's it.
You're actually not asking them to hire local in your resolution.
But I, the interim fire chiefs indicated that by creating the list the way they're considering it, there's going to be a local element to it, and there's no guarantee with the current system that that would happen. It gets us a little bit closer.
Okay. Counsel Schumaker asks for a recorded vote. Counsel Christian's asked for a recorded vote, so.
A recorded vote has been requested. Counselor Turco?
Against.
Counselor Fata?
Four.
Counselor Christian?
Four.
Counselor Kompadich?
Four.
Counselor Hoopinen?
Four.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Four.
Counselor Schumaker?
Against.
Counselor Nero?
Four.
Counselor Bruni?
Four.
Counselor Myers?
Four.
Counselor Buttland?
Four.
Mayor Provinciano?
Against.
Motion passes. Nine to three. Counsel, our next item is a notice of motion, Tax Ratio and Tax Policy Budgeting Sessions. It will be read but considered at the June 26 meeting, provided it receives a mover and secondar. Mayor Provinciano has brought this forward. Whereas tax ratios are used to establish the municipal tax rates to be paid annually by multi-residential, commercial, and industrial-class properties, and whereas the legislated regulations governing the use of tax ratios and associated changes in tax payments from property owners are complex, and whereas it is desirable for council to have as detailed an understanding as possible of how its decisions will impact local ratepayers in all property classes, now therefore be it resolved that the Finance and Tax Department staff be directed to have set aside one meeting during the 2018 budget schedule to explain the following: Current tax policy and how it distributes the tax levy across property classes; provincial thresholds, ranges of fairness, and levy restrictions, and how these affect the use of tax ratios for different classes; the financial impact of hypothetical changes to the tax ratios for commercial and industrial classes, and how such changes might affect the taxes levied from other property classes; and how capping and clawback regulations and policies affect the taxes owing for individual properties when there are substantial shifts in assessment or tax rate changes within a class. Our next item is eight point six on the addendum. It is another notice of motion. Again, this is brought forth by Mayor Provinciano. However, I would note to council that Councillors Nero and Schumaker have indicated they will move in second this motion when it comes back to you on June 26. Whereas on March 17, 2003, the Corporation of the City of Sioux St. Marie enacted a peddler bylaw to license, govern, and regulate peddlers operating within the city, and whereas over the past several years, there have been repeated complaints made by local businesses to the city, the Sioux St. Marie Police Service, and Algoa Public Health regarding the operation of an out-of-town peddler who frequents the city and sells a variety of foodstuffs from a truck without license, and whereas the actions of this peddler have had a negative effect on local businesses and are potentially putting residents who consume the peddler's products at an elevated risk of obtaining foodborne illness, and whereas despite the actions of this peddler being well-known and informally advertised, the party is yet to be charged or otherwise sanctioned for breaching the peddler bylaw, therefore be it resolved that the city legal department be directed to review the peddler bylaw and report back on how its compliance and enforcement provisions could be strengthened as to deter peddlers from operating illegally within the city and thereby ensure greater fairness for local businesses. Counsel, this brings us to the bylaw section of the agenda. Motion by Councillors Bruni and Hollingsworth, resolved that all bylaws under item 11 of the agenda, under date 2017-0612, be approved.
All in favor? Carry.
Motion for closed session. Motion by Councillors Bruni and Myers, resolved that this council proceed into closed session to discuss two proposed disposition of property items and an issue under the company's creditors' arrangement act, and further be it resolved that should said closed session be adjourned, the council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same matters without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? Carry.
No motion by Councillors Bruni and Myers, resolved that this council shall now adjourn.
All in favor? Carry.